All right, I'll open up this meeting of the Maynard Planning Board. Today's date is February twenty seventh, two thousand point four, and the time is seven oh two P M. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, which means that members of the board, members of the public, and applicants can either participate here at town hall or virtually through the Zoom link. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Tonight, we have four planning board members present here at town hall and two online. I just need to check that the two members online are able to participate fully. Annette, are you able to participate fully in tonight's meeting?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Annette. Jim, are you able to participate fully in tonight's meeting?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Jim. Let's go to item one, or that item two. Item two, the public hearing for two to six Powder Mill Road. This is continued from February thirteenth, two thousand point four. Thanks, guys, for coming back today. Phil, you want to give us a status of what has happened the last couple of weeks, and then we'll turn it over to the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Phil, I'm the Planning Director. For the last few weeks in the time since the last appearance of both board or the applicant, there's been significant progress made. We did get a number of submittals today that you haven't had an opportunity to see. But most of it, I think, is just tying up some loose ends that the applicant presented. At this point, we have sign off from a number of the components of the site plan review and the special permit review. But we do have some open issues specifically. I think we're going to talk about lighting tonight. We're going to talk about landscaping. There was a couple of other issues, including the gate for the screening for the gate for against Waltham Avenue. And we're looking again at a special permit for, and what started out as a mixed-use project is now is a multi-family development exclusively. We're looking at a special permit also for reduction of parking and a site plan approval. The project still will require, in addition to the the planning board's actions, its conservation commission, DPW approval, affordable housing trust, there's still a number of staff, you know. But the applicant has been diligently trying to work with staff, and I think we're in pretty good shape. But there will be some new material that you'll see tonight from the consultant, so sure.
Thanks, though. Thank you, Mr. Staff, Mr. Robowski. Could you introduce yourself to the record, please, and introduce whatever all maybe going to?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Mark Robowski, how's the applicant office in the Dana Mill Gallery?
Adam Stack from where? It's just your floor to continue with your presentation.
Thank you. I think we'll have Vito wanted to give an update on the civil center if he can turn his mic on.
I'm sure. Let me just, I'll bring the plans up on the screen once. So there was just a few updates since the last meeting. I know that there was some comment to the last meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't there, but there was some talk about the dumpster recycling area off to the rear in this corner. We did expand that slightly to make room for a separate recycling area. So now there's a, you know, a dedicated dumpster and also a recycling area adjacent to it. We also added the bollards to protect the transformer pad up by Powder Mill Road. So we added those on both sides of that in case you go from the parking lot or from the roadway from either direction. And then we also took off some of the snow storage that was down in this area. I think it was probably just close too close to the proximity of the river. So we took that off of the plans. Other than that, they weren't, haven't been much for updates. I think we addressed the comments from Green International through the previous revisions that were done prior to the last meeting. I can go through those if anyone wanted to, but those were on the set prior to the the last meeting. Those are really the only kind of minor comments and revisions that we had in the updated set, though. I guess I can hand it back over if anyone has any specific questions or want me to go over anything on the site plan in more detail. I'm sure I can do that.
We could, pardon, go to the board of subject matter wise. We could ask about civil plans, and then I can leave you some lighting that we're on as well. That'd be okay?
Sure. Vito, stand by, and I'll ask Chris Coleman come do your landscaping, do the landscaping, and give you an update on. But I think he's doing it like this. Chris is on here. That's Chris on mute.
Oh, and I'll stop sharing my screen, too.
Hey, everybody.
There we go.
All right.
Chris, I'm going to make you a call.
Okay. Can everybody see that?
I got my head.
There you go.
So, yeah, so since our our last meeting, we had a couple, couple minor revisions. We updated our rendered site plan to reflect the changes Vito kind of just walked over, walked through. Dated our planting plan as well to to match. And then we had a couple of questions open that we responded to this afternoon regarding the lighting, one of which was about removing calculation points. It's showing up on this plan. Let me bring it up, the next one. We had some overlap of the calculation points where the the foot candles are showing inside of the the footprint of the building. So that was updated in order to make sure that the calculations for the different areas were correct. In between, we had, we sort of had like an interim peer review set of comments that came in since the last meeting. But previously, we had been asked to sort of color code and highlight the site as opposed there to show different uses of the site and then break out the foot candle levels, the lighting levels in each of these different use areas, which we have here. I will spare everybody walking through foot candles on the plan, but that has been worked through. There was, we got some comments about the mounting height elevations of some of the lights along Powder Mills, along Powder Mill here at the the front facade along the sidewalk. Those have been raised so that they won't be in conflict with ADA accessibility along the sidewalk. And what were other comments? There was some, there was questions about, there was a conflict between the drawings regarding the mounting height of our pole lights in the parking lot and what was listed on our details. We confirmed those in the spreadsheet that they are, in fact, mounted, the pole lights in the parking lot are mounted at eight feet above finish grade as opposed to fifteen that they were at previously. And that was in part to make sure that we weren't casting any light beyond our property line on the butter side here. And then our last comment, there was a question regarding the controls. We did update information to have a specification for photo cells as well as timer and a clock for the lights. So the plan is that the lights will turn on and off for dawn and dusk. So they'll be, they'll turn on automatically based on light levels on the site. And then at ten P M, or if there's a certain time that anyone prefers, the lights in the parking lot area will dim to fifty percent. And these controls will allow for that. And then the last question we had on our spreadsheet from the peer review was about providing motion sensors. But the the part numbers for all the fixtures specified actually include a motion sensor in the fixture themselves. So the pole lights along the parking lot edge here, as well as the wall packs along the the face of the building that are casting down to the uncovered parking, as well as the surface mount, the flush mount lights in the ceiling above the covered parking will also, they'll, all three of those fixtures have a motion sensor built in. So if after ten o'clock or whatever time we set the dimming to occur, if some, if someone moves out there, the lights will come back on to full strength for a certain period of time. That's able to be adjusted between thirty seconds and like twenty minutes. So if there's a specific set of time that the that the town wants to enforce, we can adjust that as needed. And then otherwise, I think we've, we've gone through all the other comments and I think provided all the information that was requested. So, yeah, so happy to talk about anything if everybody has any questions and go from there.
Chris, can you note that the fence line between properties that we closed that off for headlights from the car to the neighbors?
Yeah, so the detail hasn't been fully figured yet, but just for reference, we were, we updated the elevation drawings because there was a comment on that of the last meeting to show a more opaque style guard rail along the the top of the retaining wall in order to hopefully to to block the majority of the headlights. You know, short of a monster truck out here, this should, you know, pretty well protect the neighbor's house from headlights shining in their yard. And then that's the, again, that's the the at installation day elevation versus the several years of growth. I think this was intended to be like three or four years of growth for the arborviters.
Is that a good place to pause for board questions?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so.
All right, I'll turn it to the board for questions and comments. Okay.
Quick question. Are the lights, I'm assuming they're sconces or something similar along Powder Mill? Part of the that will be dimmed by fifty percent at ten P M, or are they separate?
No, we, we only had the parking lot areas. So the the uncovered parking was just covered by pole lights and wall packs, as well as the covered parking under the overhang here would dim it to fifty percent. Because in our last meeting, someone had made a comment that this corner was pretty dark around the sidewalk, and they were actually, they were asking if we could increase the amount of light there for the pedestrian experience.
Yes.
If, if someone wants them to dim, we can certainly add them to the dimmer. But for now, they're, they're not currently shown as dimming.
No, I think along the sidewalk, it makes them to keep them.
Sure.
Other questions, comments?
Oh, for that sidewalk piece on Powder Mill, can we, we'll maybe just see what the lighting levels will be?
So we're ranging anywhere from half a foot candle. And then once we get around the corner of the building, back down to zero. But this is not accounting for the existing streetlights that are out there. Because we couldn't get a defined specification for the existing light that's out there. So this is strictly just light that's coming from the building itself.
Is that comparable to the illumination of the parking lot? Or is it more or less?
The parking lot will be more. Parking lot ranges from just under one foot candle to up around ten.
Is there a reason it would be less on the sidewalk than the parking lot?
Only because the the sidewalks just being lit by some sort of decorative sconces in between the, there's those canopies off the side of the building. So there's not a, there's not a ton of room to to throw a lot of light. It's more, it's more of an accent light than, you know, a true street light.
Thought the last meeting was presented that there would be lighting under the canopy. Is that not correct?
These lights, I believe, are intended to go in between the canopies.
What are the heights of the canopies?
I'm not sure. We'd have to ask the architect about that. The lights are mounted to be, the light source would be seven feet high, though.
Bill, do you have a suggestion? Correct?
It just wanted to be so effective. It seems like the sidewalk should be that as well as the parking lot.
Yeah, I did, I did, I thought we didn't discuss that much, too. That was one of my notes. Didn't you say? I'm, I'm seeing in illumination was under directly under the light up to six point nine handle.
Yep.
And then it, it looks like it dips down to under one handle to that the extent of the range of light.
Is this the maximum number of locations we can have it because there's a canopy? Or are we going to add another one or two?
I think we're about maxed out. We might be able to add another one on the corner, but the canopies do take up a pretty significant amount of space on that facade there.
What are we doing on the Wallham Street?
While then, we have a couple, we have the same, the same wall sconce on the pillars that open up there on the edge. The light levels here are a little bit higher because they have the, the flush mount lights from the garage as well, providing light out onto the sidewalk.
Yes, we can figure out before this meeting is over, but we'll do an extra sconce on Powder Mill.
Yeah, I think we can definitely squeeze one in over here on the corner to kind of make it, it'll probably help it make it more consistent all the way across the front, for sure.
So Phil, let's, the, the condition that there'll be a light added to the site plan on the south west corner of the building. Exteris lights comes along. Powder Mill, Powder Mill.
Southwest corner of the building?
Yeah. And if you're not sure, this meeting is being recorded, read it. Any other questions from the board?
Oh, correct. The lighting conditions, the, the guardrail detail is not available yet, right? So what's the process for that one here to determine whether it's selected?
You mean the guardrail along the eastern portion of the parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is, is there a guardrail detail available on the eastern portion of the parking lot?
No, not yet. That hasn't been developed yet.
Okay. We can condition that for town staff approval. And we did that, we did that with the meeting crossing items, if you recall. We had DPW's engineer just approved from sort of kind of a safety and static point of view.
Well, it's that, it's, it's preventing light from hitting the air button.
Yeah, I can just just compare it to.
Oh, that, so you're saying the the fencing?
Whatever, I don't know. I thought they were just going to put something over there existing there, but I don't know. I think that's a new guardrail.
When you say guardrail, I thought clearly safety item. So you're, you're talking about the fencing being shown to prevent light from leaving.
Which I, which is also correct.
We could just condition that whatever is chosen, if it needs to be, well, I don't know if we could, I don't know how to technically.
I don't know what the word, you used the word pay, you don't understand what that means. I'm going to do this.
Right.
Because it should be doing whatever those springs will do when they're fully grown. These are not fully paid.
We could condition it for chair approval or town staff approval. Who goes with the option?
I don't know.
Before we go on, please, just on the lighting, remember that we're, so we're trying to do a single light. There's what's to be added on, I don't know.
That's the, what?
Okay. And is the board specifying a general type of lighting or?
The same kind of sconce. The same kind of sconce to match the rest of the long, long power.
Got it, okay. So I'll ask Jim, any questions at this point?
Yes, I do, I do. Could I ask who the principals are of Rice Road Development and who, what their experiences?
Yeah, I did, I did catch that. So I'm the principal of Rice Road Development. I own, I own the Wallham Street property in that LLC. My partner, Mark Christopher, is on here, and we form ASMC LLC, which owns the two dash six Powder Mill Road property. Mark has been in development for many years. I am a, I own a plumbing company for twenty years and been in construction for fifteen now. So construction and this type of work is my whole life.
Jim, did that answer your question?
I think it is, yes.
Do you have, do you have other questions or comments at this point?
I do not, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I'll get back, back in with you later. Annette, do you have any questions or comments at this point? I s, I think I saw you shake your head no when you were on mute.
I'm sorry. No, I don't. I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you, Annette. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions here. Okay. Are there other technical items for us to discuss tonight?
My understanding that there's been a updated traffic study that was submitted to you, and we don't have the traffic engineer with us, but I know that that was available to you.
Maybe this is the time for me to check in with our peer reviewer. That's okay. Jim Thorne, are you on?
Yes.
Thanks, Jim. Maybe give us a big picture overview of where peer review is at at the moment, and then we can, and I might add a few specifics right in.
Okay, yeah, we've made a lot of progress since the last planning board hearing. There was an updated traffic report that was submitted to us that resolves all of our remaining comments related to traffic. So it was good that you were able to address all those comments. In terms of lighting, I think Chris kind of went over the last remaining comments that we had, and we were able to finalize and resolve them today, actually. So all the lighting comments have been fully completed. And in terms of, of like the civil related comments, the remaining ones are, you know, items that we kind of are looking for, you know, board's decision or conditions of approval. One of them is being, you know, the site has multiple walls. And only the wall along the west side is kind of, is being detailed. But there isn't actually like a structural detail associated with it. But it does have the height, and it does have guardrails, which is, you know, what we're looking for in terms of more detail. But there isn't actually like a design detail that goes along with it. But structural review of retaining walls is kind of beyond the scope of this peer review. And then some of the other civil items are more condition or, yeah, conditions of approval to coordinate with you know, other staff like DPW and Conservation Commission, Mass DOT, you know, Fire Department, getting approval from the utility owner for the transformer, just making sure that that layout is, is approved by the utility owner as well. Let's see. So that, those are the civil ones. In terms of landscape, I think the only remaining ones for landscape has to do with the landscape maintenance plan. But I think in the last planning board hearing, we, we kind of discussed that that might be a condition of approval once the new owner takes control of the building, and they have to establish a maintenance plan for the landscaping. And those were, those were our remaining comments. I know there are some other comments from the board that we had in our spreadsheet as well relating to the location of the transformer, accessibility to the bike storage, making sure that the drain that's underneath the building that ties into the sewer system meets the mass regs. I think that might be under building code because it's within the building footprint. So maybe that might be a building department review of that. And then there was a question about, you know, open space, if that will be part of the project and how much. And I think that's all the remaining comments that we had in our spreadsheet.
Thanks, Jim.
Yep.
Chris, can you remind me of a couple of things?
Yes, good.
Are there changes like storage, or is it still with that rack rather than water?
I have a couple items as well, maybe we've just covered it a lot of time. Can you just rephrase that on bike storage?
We actually, and I sent over, I don't have them here, but there's an updated architectural plan that shows on the commercial, if you want to call it brown, not commercial, but the ground floor area underneath the parking. We took two spots where were previously intended to storage and converted those to and then bike storage privately, so that the tenants have their own private bike block storage area. They still have the bike block racks on the sidewalk or public or whatever. Do you have any?
The transformer, do they make noise?
Not from my experience, but I'll turn that over to the applicants. Maybe your civil engineer can comment on the noise impact of the transformer.
Yeah, I'm not sure on the, if there's any noise levels from it, we could check in. It would be more of a slight electrical, it's not really our specialty. I don't imagine that there would be, but I, you know, that's not really our specialty of it. Yeah, I don't, Chris probably doesn't have the answer either with the site lighting, whether he knows with the transformer sizing. I think it comes down to that in the end. But typically, they do not make noise, but, you know, that's not my expertise.
I can say from experience, I have a transformer on a property that I own, and she does not, it won't be the same size as it, but it does not make noise.
Then I think my only other comment was, are we going to see something architectural on the Wallham Street side, the gate and all that stuff?
That's one, yeah. Can you update us on the, the concept of the gate?
So that is on the package, I said. Can you pull that package up? Because we do have an option for an inverted iron gate that will swing in. I know you had mentioned a roll-up gate, and we've been working. Uh, I know you had mentioned, uh, a roll up gate and we've been working with the fire chief to, uh, see which. Would, would work better for her. I'm not sure if she wants it to be see through or, or not see through, if that's an issue. Um, I do know that she's going to, which I have a, a control bug. That that would be access in and out. So we basically have two options, which would be the iron inverted gate or if it's roll down door. With a, I don't know if it would be a mural, but maybe it's an opaque, uh, film or something like that would be on it. This is kind of where we went and waiting for more, um, guidance from you and the fire chief.
Which one is this on animal store?
Uh, I was.
Okay. Or is he don't have it wrong? This is two sixteen. That was, that have the.
It, does that have the bike storage? Cause I think I just saw that.
Which is the one, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. This one?
Yeah.
I believe it is, yeah. You go on that.
The bottom right one?
Yeah. Yeah, so that just gives you the idea. We, you know, this is, we were thinking, uh, again, like the inverted iron gate that would swing in. Um. Or, uh, you know, a typical concealed roll down door behind the arc that would just come straight down.
But we don't have an illustration of the roll door?
Not for that, no.
We could condition approval of the spec on the roll door for the gate.
Yeah, okay. Roll doors faster, so fire.
Well, I think there was, I believe the fire chief could skip some guidance at some point about wanting to steep. Through.
That's kind of why we stuck with this, um, but it doesn't mean that.
I would, what I would like to do is. But the plan, I think should have plenty more input and then we go to the fire chief. And see if that is sufficient and if it's not, then the fire chief or safety reasons can. Advise and we can figure out later on the modification necessary. Which I don't think is too good. But I, I think it's fine to start with plenty worth looking for and then the chief can advise. Chief calls all the losses. Well, not all, but.
The tide though, right?
I don't know, what do you mean by that?
The Riverside air is wide open. Give some view the chief might be looking for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so, right, let's condition, maybe we condition that the, with a roll up gate.
A roll up gate, not as.
Yeah. If, if that's amenable for your team? Is that okay?
Yeah, I mean, she's okay with it. So let's, let's, let's condition that and then for some reason she said, that she says something else, then. I'll be like a fallback. I'll talk to the chief and that's nothing my question.
So you're, you're, but you're ideal just for the condition, I guess it's clear. The actual gate, you, we would, you prefer the, a roll up gate. If that for some reason is unacceptable with the fire chief, do we wanna bake in there that the fire chief shall. Modify the file was aligned with the input of land board or whatever, something to that fact?
I think that's fine.
And, but this gate, you, you do not want.
I think, I think our first choice would be a roll gate.
Okay.
But if the fire chief says that this is a better idea, I have a feeling that you will all be amenable to that.
Okay, alright, got it, okay.
The, the logic one is you don't just wanna look at park cart.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's the kind of.
Oh, yeah, but the, the roll gate will also need to be colored or something to be complimentary to the. Facade on that side, it can't be a.
So we'll make some.
Yeah, I mean, you wouldn't want to just wanna, you know, right, I mean, some sort of aesthetic. A painting or.
That's why I, I, I prefer that this specification need to be approved later on by, um, either council staff. The air or someone.
Okay.
That's all. Just so that someone has eyes on it.
Oh, yeah, I just meant for, I just meant that, that, understand what, what Bill was saying, that, that, I heard before. What he said, the, when the roll down, when it comes down, it's aesthetically.
Right.
And sort of matches the general. Right. Satistically in harmony with the rest.
He chose bright yellow, I think.
To get the guy that did the photo, the hummingbird, the brick building in front of the series to do that.
So you know where we're headed?
I have a feeling. Bill, get, um.
Um, related with that, that architectural, I, I missed it with the, um, interview, but. Is there a guard rail protecting the cars from going into the river? The, all I'm seeing is there's, you know, the parking lot just rolls into that patio area.
You mean under the building?
Well, the parking under the building has no defined order between the outside plaza area over the river. And, I mean, it's like a.
So, so maybe, uh, maybe your civil engineer can just describe what the transition is from the parking to behind the building.
Yep, yeah, so right in between the two, yeah, with a patio, but it's the parking, um. I'm just looking at the plan right now. We were intending on having a six inch curb right there. Um, so it'd be a six inch curb up, step up into the, for the patio, so it would stop cars from just rolling through. And then we also call out for some kind of, um, uh, similar to possibly a guard rail or something in there, but ideally just the curb itself is gonna stop everybody. Uh, from rolling through, so it'd be a, basically like a sidewalk, uh, through there. Uh, we pull up and this is a six inch vertical curb, uh, we wouldn't be able to just roll up and over it, uh, so similar just to like a sidewalk next to the parking area.
I know you put together a landscape management plan or landscape management plan. Um, we could go through that or we could condition that it's reviewed by, improved by downstairs.
Yeah, we did.
I. I would, I would, cause I know things change, my preference would be to have that lined up for CO. Particularly about.
There was a lot of active stuff in the maintenance plan that I, I wanted to talk to conservation about, yeah, because some of that stuff is. Gonna be very specific to what we can actually do and use on that backyard.
Um, that's why, yes, I, my preference would be to kick that down the road, cause I know additional discussion could happen.
We, we wrote a draft condition last, um, at our last meeting and we put a landscape, uh, and. It was submitted prior to CEO.
Yep.
Um, and, and that way, you know, you have a chance to go conservation.
I think it's great that you have a, a, a working draft and I think that's gonna be, yeah, relevant for your other work. Thank you. Other, other.
I have a question. Um, one of the things on my notes I had, did we, um. We were talking about recycling.
With the, uh, thank you, um, can, can one of your team just describe the trash recycling update?
Oh, you know, did, I mean, he can go over it again.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I missed it then.
I missed it too.
Yeah, we can just show that, that slide again.
We didn't zoom in, I wanna do it.
Yeah, we, we enlarged that area so another one. The, the, the specific guns are in.
What is on the left?
What is on the left, what was on the right?
Yeah.
Yes, that whole area got bigger and then they have the space of both, great.
Alright, um, again, I'm checking with Jim and Annette, either one of you have any additional comments or questions for the, you got here?
Not from me.
Not from me either, thank you.
Anybody?
Chris, I have one last topic and, I remember all the. Information about that affordable housing that entered into this hearing. Even just the. Mix of order of yours.
Sure, we can talk that, Bill, um, did you hear the question?
I did.
Um, you.
I think I did, did for Bonza Trust question?
Well, no, ju- just from a factual basis, has the affordable housing unit information been entered into this hearing? I mean, just, you know, how many of each size and stuff like that?
I don't think it's in the DA, I think it's just been DA. You mean like one bedroom, this one?
Right. Can we just enter?
We can.
In the record.
I can enter it in the, like, decision.
Well, no, can we just talk about now, so it's.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I would probably do, yeah, I, let me just back up one second. I, um, Bill had asked me some questions earlier, been questions on the affordable housing card. I addressed those without telling you, but, uh, that's not what you're asking. You're asking is. The unit count and breakdown part of this?
Yeah, so it's part of the.
Okay, um, yeah, well, we can, um.
Sure. We go with that. Okay, well, to me, it is why I have the.
Yeah, so total number of units, total number of bonus units. And then, um, the breakdown of one, two, three, four, five, it's better, no, whatever.
I could pull, I, I have only from the draft.
We can table that if you need, if you need a minute to pull it. I can get, if you guys wanna continue talking, I can, I can get. Watch my chat slide, give me a second. So we've been talking site plan review. Um, we. We have, uh, so one of our, one of our votes is site plan review. One of our votes is special permit criteria. Correct?
What you would do, yeah, the special permit criteria, we have a couple of them I have. I have written up as a.
So, okay, so I remember now, um, I'd like to go to public comments. And then we can look at special permit criteria and once we have, have it with, let's, let's get back to the helping, helping.
So project totally numbered, uh, fire rate would be twenty, we're getting sixteen bonus units. Uh, there'll be twenty-two two bedrooms and fourteen one bedrooms. Um. We have three affordable ones and six affordable twos at the moment.
And then there'll be.
One, three bedroom area?
We have one, three bedroom in, you know, building.
But not.
Right.
Okay.
Gotcha. So, um, and then out of the affordable, there's the sixty-eight.
How, can you just cover the affordable ones again? How many affordable two bedrooms and how many?
So we have three affordable ones and six affordable twos.
To make the nine, okay, that's nine total, cause we have nine affordable, but you have, um, sixteen bonus. Correct?
Right, okay.
Yeah.
That was twenty-two two bedrooms.
Yeah.
And fourteen one bedroom.
But there's actually, cause this plan now, we still kept one, one three bedroom in the whole building.
So it's thirty-seven.
No, it's thirty-six and I'll have to do the count again if it's twenty-two or fourteen.
Okay.
But we left one three bedroom then, cause I, I know that was something like that.
Okay, so, yeah. One of those will be adjusted.
Hmm.
Okay.
So potentially it could be twenty-one two bedroom. Three bedroom.
Or thirteen.
Correct. Um, alright, I'll open this up to public comments. Um, members that are online, if you could either use the Ray Tan feature or come off the video and read it again and I'll, we have to call on you. Yeah. Um, Thomas Herbst, I might guess is you have a public comment? Yes, um, Bill, would you allow Tom Herbst to unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Um, now, what, what you were looking at is you're looking at the actual parking, is that the, that's the question that. I understand that you're regarding, right?
Um, I'm, we, we're talking parking tonight, but I'm happy to take whatever public comment you wanna add to it into the record.
Okay, well, my concern is again repetitive that the, uh, the height of the building is a concern. And also the parking as it relates to the, uh, the number of units. And my concern is I don't want people parking in my parking lot as a result of the, the number of. Given that there's one point five spaces per unit. And again, the height of the building as it relates to, I'm gonna lose, um, financial gain as a result of solar loss. Um, so parking, solar loss, and again, I will repeat that the parking lot, the way that the parking lot pitches. It pitches in towards the retaining wall, um, which then again goes into, again, a separate drainage system, which again comes down to. Conservation, but the other thing is that the, the water that comes down Wall Tam Street comes onto Potomac. And that water basically as of this point goes into the, uh, to the back parking lot. And if that isn't pre-properly, um, it's gonna go into the new parking lot, but if it, if it's raised too high, then. That actual excess water from Wall Tam Street is gonna enter my property, which it never has as of this point. I just don't wanna see this project, uh, cause an issue for our, you know, property. So that's my concern. Um, so again, height of the building, I just don't see. That the, the height of the building, but that relates to, again, coming down to the parking. I think it's, again, it's just you're trying to put. Twenty pounds of potatoes in a five pound bag, that's my concern. Um, so, but I, as it relates to the drain, I believe that if there's an additional drain that is added. In front of, uh, two-six Potomac, it may actually catch the additional volume of water. Um, so that it won't go into either one of the, uh, the properties. Um, so that would be my concern. The other thing, I, the one other thing that I don't quite understand is again, the lighting. Um, the lighting, the, at night, I just, I do have two bedrooms that basically will almost abut those exact positions of the, uh. At least one of the lights, so the, the, you know, I, I just don't see how that's not gonna be an issue. I mean, lighting is lighting. I understand they can put shields on it, that's a potential, uh, thing that can be done. Um, so that would be my comment as it relates to this evening. Thank you very much. My name is Thomas Herbst, and again, I'm on eight Potomac Road. I am the father of this particular project. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Herbst. Um, other public comments? Again, please use the Ray Tan feature on Zoom or come off a video, um, or ask to be unmuted. Um, I'll leave public comment open for another minute if someone wants to provide one. Um, you know, Bill, regarding Sir Herbst's comments of stormwater, um, protection. Um, is, is that something that can be considered and addressed in other elements? I believe he's referring to. Water on the roadway that's now coming on to site and then would potentially need to be, you know. There'll be changes to the stormwater infrastructure, not infrastructure, but the way stormwater flows. Because of development, that's.
That's correct.
That's typical. Um, is that at all considered in other sort of avenues beside playing board?
That we, uh, typically will be considered, uh, and evaluated in conservation commission. So that would be the track, uh, they had spoke to, um. Conservation, uh, regarding, uh, stormwater in reference to. a couple of questions we've already had raised, and, uh, that is indeed where that would be.
Okay. Right. Um, and the, I believe the app can heard the comments about lighting and things of that nature, and I, as always, I think it's best to consider others as best you can. Um, and, and listen to and understand their concerns, um, and I'm just highlighting that. Because I think you heard it, and I'm sure you wanted it. Um. There, we do have special permit criteria, whether that I believe the applicant put together, is that correct?
We do, um, we, we, um, it was from your justification statement, we, yeah, we had the applicant's original one.
So that, that, that was just a question of whether it's available, um, but I wanted it, so it is, would, would this be appropriate time, Mr. Vravsky, to cover the special permit criteria? And I'm allowing you to provide whatever other information you'd like furthering.
Um, I believe that we covered that in the transmittal letter that we originally submitted to special permit application. I have a copy of your draft, um, proposed findings and decision for the special permit.
They have maybe made some changes, but it sounded like.
Right.
Oh, after they're all listed in it.
Right, they're, they're all, they're all.
So we could talk about that unless there's other information you wanted, you wanted to present on site plans.
I don't think that we have anything else that we need to present, and be happy to talk about special permit criteria as part of the playground.
Is there any other final comments from the planning board on site plan?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna bring up a couple more of the other concerns in terms of, um, which is remind me how many parking spaces there are.
Okay. Forty.
Forty.
Okay. Um, within our downtown overlay district, we've had a lot of flexibility in terms of parking. And thus far, it has served us well in terms of, um, you know, allowing less car focus for these new units. Um, and I do feel like moving forward is a good way to go. And that any problems that might arise from that, you know, we have this concern at other sites as well. Um, and there haven't been any major issues as far as I know, and I do know that parking enforcement, you know, can be dealt with reasonably if there are any problems that arise.
Of all the projects we've done, Natalie, we haven't, um, I'm not aware.
Yeah.
Of any that we've done in the DOD where the reduction of parking has been granted that we've had a problem.
Right, including the one next to me, which I would know about.
That, that's a good point, yeah. Yeah. Which is a twenty-second unit.
And then in terms of the height of the building, what is the height of the building, can we pull up one of the plans that shows us, just to remind me? In terms of what is, um, what is allowed during, in, in this building district?
Forty-five is allowed.
Yeah, I know, I know it's forty-five, so I just wanna double check.
Zero, she's one hundred. Go down the one. Up one.
Yeah.
Can you zoom in on the measurements for each floor?
Right.
This is forty-four.
Well, that's saying that the roof, top roof is four-four.
The last measure I can see on the right hand side, we went into the good dude, forty-four. Bottom.
Maybe that's a edge.
It's like I worked it on top of that, this might be actual roof.
I think we had some, one of the drawings had a few, where you could like compare how that height is with like the tippy move across the street, you know, something that showed up.
We did that amassing of the, of the whole intersection. Then in a different. Age.
So it looks like the, would the, there had, is a few more feet above that?
Yeah. And then the, um, says that I like what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was my understanding that that doesn't go into your coverage.
Yeah, I'm just like, you know, getting a general feel for what. Um, and the building is squeezed to the, for this corner from the others.
Yeah.
Leading to it having the most face. So that's good.
Those roles are trying to keep the big cut, the power bill as far away from the intersection as possible.
Yeah.
That covered.
Yeah, I mean, I think that in terms of using the site, that's the most, um, the least disruptive way to organize it. Bill, are you looking for that thing, or are we?
On height?
Yeah.
Yeah, just what I was describing, right, yeah, I was just trying to find it.
While you wait, you have other.
Okay, height, um, here we are, um, okay. Uh, height of each should be a vertical district, uh, distance measured from the mean finished ground level adjoining the entire structure to the highest extension of any part of structure. The height of the building shall be the vertical distance measured, in the case of a flat roof, from the mean of finished ground level to the level of the highest point of the roof beams adjacent to the street wall. In the case of, and indicates of pitch groups from the finished ground level to the mid rafter stand of the highest roof slope. Where no roof beam exists, where there are structures wholly or partly above the roof. The height should be measured from the curb level to the highest point of the building. The provision of the section of governing the height of buildings, structures in all districts shall not apply to timneys, water towers, air conditioning equipment, copulas, spires, steeple, elevator bulkheads, skylights, ventilators, wireless facilities and other necessary features appropriated to buildings which are usually kept area above roofs and are not used for human occupants. So you're talking about, you know, machinery or functional uh, equipment.
So the point is what's being demonstrated is compliant?
This, uh, as that i- in this case to the mean of finished ground level to level of the highest point of the roof beams adjacent to the street wall.
Um, I assume, don't expect you're looking at the, the, right?
Yeah.
I know, it's like saying.
But, um. You know, so part of it will be fifty plus feet.
But it does look like tower.
Yeah, the tower.
The tower will be, anything's not.
E.
All right, but.
Yeah. Okay.
So.
Um, so items to cover tonight, I believe are for the, at least for the board awareness is, uh, what the special permit criteria and how that be met. Um. And then we have DA discussions, but essentially for this, what part of the DA is relevant to the special permit criteria? That except. Because we don't need to discuss the whole scope of what's being discussed in the development.
I should see it, but, yes, not in VR.
Yes, okay.
Um, but would you like me, would you like me to begin with the generic special permit criteria?
Yeah.
Okay, so as you know, in section, uh, ten point, uh, four, there are criteria subsection two. And they are covered in the draft decision of page three and, uh, continuing on to page four. And I have no disagreement with what the draft decision suggests, there should be the appropriate finding. So first, the social economic community needs to survive a proposal, I think the key feature of this is that you're adding thirty-six units to the downtown, which in and of itself is a contribution to the vitality of the downtown. More importantly, perhaps nine affordable units will be added, and as Adam went through them before, they're diverse in nature and uh, will add, uh, opportunities for people to, uh, locate within the vibrant vill- village or downtown of Maynard. Second is traffic flow and safety. Uh, the BAI report, now that it's updated, indicates that there's negligible traffic that will result at any point of the day or particularly during the peak hours, cycle distances are adequate. Uh, parking has been, uh, there's a, a, a request to lower the parking from a requirement of, I think it's fifty-four to forty, forty all at one wall. And, um, yeah, I, I think as Bill pointed out, this, uh, kind of activity in the DOD has not resulted in, uh, parking spilling over or taking up other places, I would note that there is available parking likely for lease within a fairly short distance of this, so um, if you're terribly concerned about the parking, you can put a condition in that we, we monitor this and, uh, perhaps reach some alternative, but I don't, I don't, I'm suggesting that although I don't think it's necessary at this time. The third is adequacy of utilities and public services, there's no doubt that there's, um, adequate capacity in the system. Before, there's neighborhood character and social structures and, um, the design of the building, which was put up on the screen, shows that this is trying to pick up on some unique aspects of downtown Maynard, it looks like a little clock down in some ways. And I think that's a nice, uh, statement about neighborhood character. Uh, it'll also, uh, again, provide for residential options that don't exist at the moment. Uh, impacts on the natural environment, there's been site cleanup that's already taken place, it's being sensitive to the latins that are adjacent there too, conservation commission has to sign up on this, all of that speaks the, uh, respect for the natural environment and fiscal impact, and just looking at the draft, they're suggesting that there's approximately going to be a hundred thousand dollars in recurring real estate tax revenue as a result of, you know, construction of the building and, uh, uh, then there will be also, uh, contributions of the thirty-six households that will be doing shopping, uh, and taking part in the spirit of downtown Maynard. There's also, uh, some special permit criteria which are specific to the DOD in section nine point four. Uh, nine point four point six point one, uh, requires the proposal to meet a standard of high quality development with regard to construction material, architectural design, uh, which will enhance the downtown and the immediate neighborhood. Uh, I think we've covered much of that in the discussion about the architecture, the lighting, uh, and the landscaping that has been the subject of our meeting this evening. And, sorry, um, we're picking that up. Nine point four point six point two, when applicable, the proposed development will provide effective protection of the Assabette from stormwater runoff. Uh, the environmental condition of the site has been improved as a result of the cleanup. And the, uh, conservation commission is doing its best to make sure that we do provide effective protection for the Assabette River. Nine point four point six point three, uh, the proposal will in- improve the function of the downtown by at least one of the six means outlined below, and this proposal, uh, meets, uh, a number of these criteria. There's a new stormwater management system that's going to be approved by the conservation commission. Uh, there will be views and access to the Assabette River for the residents of the project, and the public's view will be improved. There will be significant improvement to the functioning of the downtown by adding, uh, downtown rental units, uh, but there will also be a streetscape re- redevelopment or reconstruction, uh, associated with a development agreement, more on that when the development agreement gets in our hands. Um, and lastly, um, you know, I, I've, I've said for years that the, the future of downtown is the future of us. The more people you have downtown, the better off the downtown's commerce to be. Uh, lastly, the proposed development is designed in a manner that's compatible with the supernatural feature. It's again, using the river to showcase the building and the residential product appropriate for the DOD than the previous uses of this site, which would auto relax garage and storage, so. I think we meet the criteria of both section ten point two and section nine point six, and for that reason would request a favorable, um, motion in connection with special permit.
At this time, is there any further information you'd like to enter into the record? Yeah.
No.
Bill, any further information that you believe should be requested?
Um, be honest, uh, just to clear up a whole of, um, of, um, there's really a question about the development agreement. Development agreement, um, is a requirement for the density bonus, you know, and that, um, in this case, you know, it would be a condition of approval. Of it be, um, the timeline, as I understand it, ideally it would be done fairly quickly, so I think that the, the only question would be if the board was inclined to vote tonight, um, would be how to word it so that the development agreement, that is, you know, wouldn't have to refile a whole decision, I'm sure. Harry Vravsky, I do for that, but, um, because as of right now, it's not. And that's what we're dealing with right now, but on the other hand, you know, you know you have to do it, and, and it's, it's in everybody's interest in the case to have it signed. It's, it's possible. So that would be the only question I have about the, you know, how to.
I, I think you might consider a condition that contributions of any building permit development agreement will be filed in the office of the panel. I mean, obviously, it's gotta be mutually agreeable.
Well, that's what we would typically do, but I didn't know what the time, like if it was signed in two weeks. I mean, I guess you could say, well, it's gone and I think none of it, I guess. Maybe, maybe it's not a problem, maybe I'll.
It's a condition of the special permit, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, so if the, if the planning board can close the public hearing tonight and we, once you do that, you have ninety days to find a decision, you'll get the statute, so. Perhaps the best thing to do would be to, with respect, if you were close to public hearing tonight and then perhaps approve the special permit subject to an appropriate development agreement being approved shortly. So it's not a formal vote, uh, and we could get the development agreement and go through staff to indicate to you that we've accepted it. And then at that point in time, uh, the package would be filed in the office with that.
Planning board will need to sign this, the development agreement, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, the select one.
In the select board.
Oh, yeah.
We will need to come back in front of the board, at least to present the final DA for signature.
Yes.
Right. And that's what we've done in the past, right?
Yes.
Better call, that we've closed, that we've closed hearings.
In either, in either order, and I think judging how that with the slot board chair yesterday briefly, and, um, I think they would, um, did a perfect work with the planning board in the first.
So I'm happy to use this time if you want to discuss any more of the DA of the board, otherwise it, um, I think this is the day condition that that added to the decision, and then we, uh, once it's finalized, planning board comes, comes back and we review the site.
Yeah, and I, I don't think there's any reason why that will take a long. will take a long time, we've seen a draft, uh, I mean, I certainly know your draft development agreement from other projects.
Yeah. Um, so if you wanted to use this time for board input, um, but that's, you, you don't have to either, it's your prerogative.
I think it's pretty much on, on, on a good, good course right now.
Um, then I'll turn it back to the board if there's any final information that the board might have to request from the applicants before we close hearing.
Two questions, not only halfway, but we have to close the hearing before we work on the condition.
Um, no. I don't, I, I would prefer to work on conditions and then close the hearing.
Okay.
But I wanted to, I wanted to first ask if there's any further information that we would.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I guess there's a question, it's not from them.
Right. Yes, and then I would like to discuss conditions and then close, would be my preference.
Yeah, so, no, no, no.
Um, so let's talk your conditions though, would you mind? Um, all the drafters, Bill, that's the easiest way to do it, yes.
That'd be easier to do, um, I did have, I had some um different information today, made time, but um, let's see. Give me a moment. If, oh, it's on, yeah, you do, Chris, it's on the, I put it on the, um.
I haven't, I haven't opened it.
Oh, if you didn't, yeah.
I can trust things.
All right, are you still, um? Uh, yeah, your co-host, you should be able to do it, okay? It's in just a simple word, document. It was uh most, there's not like, um.
You sure?
Yeah. I did.
Isn't he pretty?
There you go. And uh, you, you'll see a few changes that we made very long.
Um, run us through these, Bill?
Sure.
Didn't even verbally add on anyone's that we've hacked on that are new? Or did you already add them?
I added anything I got.
Oh, nice.
But not, not tonight, yeah. Um, okay.
Questions come up, you'll ask the, do one by one, stay with the end.
Um, whatever's appropriate, maybe one by one, you know.
Um, well, let's see, number one's a boilerplate, um, which uh we're just typical with the building commissioner. Uh, if he has to make a determination, the building commissioner um confirms that um project is being constructed according to the um.
And substantial performance.
Good staff performance for the decision. Uh, development agreement, we put there, so we'll just, Luke can leave that the way it is, yeah. Uh, that's just saying that we have a development agreement, I think, when I brought it before. Um, I changed three, four, and five based on some input today and um, the housing consultant, um, our town's housing consultant, Liz Ruff, um is aware of this project and has been handling our um local initiative program for our, our affordable units. Um, you've uh, Adam has engaged a um you have a house in, oh, who did you end up with for a house in, special? Yeah, Maureen, yeah, Maureen O'Hara, I think.
Okay, good.
Oh, yeah. Yes, um, so what this is saying is um, is basically ensuring that whatever we do under the local initiative is going to count against our um our subsidized housing majority or ethnic guide. Um, this project with one fifteen will bring us over our ten percent if it's um approved of that, which is our safe harbor. Um, number four is again saying that it is not E I T, I, it's the um E O C, I think, you know, with the former D H C D, and I just, I didn't change in there, but we're just saying that the lift has to be executed um
Without.
With the state, right? Um, and five was uh added by the lottery consultants, um, the lot, the housing consultants, exactly. Um, that your lottery will be in accordance with the lift, you know, for affordable housing units.
The lottery is usually called a terms collection.
Yeah, right, right, the lottery is for homes. Okay.
All right, guys, the technical.
Right, it's the same, right.
So, let's pause there.
Yeah, sure.
Um, any, any feedback from the applicants, I'm really, I don't know. What did, back from the board, hopefully now.
Going to be changing lottery dependent, and so I can, everybody.
Yeah.
Um, so paragraph three, you're going to fix the reference to the D A C D. Okay. Um, number four is needed to be changed. Um the Affordable Housing Trust has to approve the preliminary prior to building permit. It's going to take forever for E O C to approve the final. So
Yeah.
State approval needs to be um prior to C O, not building permit, because, you know, otherwise the project is dead for a whole year.
Okay, so, so number five, it would be, I mean, wait, number four.
We, we have a requirement in the planning board that the Affordable Housing Trust has to do the initial lift and stuff and sign off on that before the billing work, so that needs to go there. Then this current board needs to be referencing occupants for not building.
Um, regarding our, our planning board regulations, that was the, the letter of substantial that they're okay with the um.
I forget what the letter says, but we typically receive a letter.
Yeah.
On the A H T. And it's basically when a Affordable Housing Trust and select board are ready to sponsor the application to the state.
Okay, I, I'll wordsmith that a little bit and maybe I'll.
The, the point is, we don't, there's no reason to hold up building permits for something that we're waiting on the state to respond.
Right, got it.
Yeah, we don't want to tie it to the state, right? So anything else on, up until this point? And it sounds like we should change the word lottery to terms lottery, terms lottery.
Yeah. Um okay, uh, so.
I'm sure you could do number six, but I don't know that. There's an old case called John G. Grant's, um, Conservation Commission agents of Kent, those wandering on John's property, and they get yelled at. Though, I, I don't go by me, maybe the law changed, that's an old case.
Um, well, this was based on that condition, that's one of the, um.
So can you just explain what the condition is? It looks like it, it grants the building inspector and agents access to the site during construction, that one again.
Per se, yeah, yeah. Um, for the building inspector uh, in the Maynard Police Department and the Fire Department. So there, there, I think the essence there is when it's um concerning safety, that they don't want to have to call ahead and say.
Um, right, we've seen this before, so if we want to make, ensure that the fire department can go put out a fire if there's a fire.
Oh, well, yes, yes, I think, I think this is more with, with, you know, with the, in, in the case of the building inspector and things like that work again. Um, I would suggest that we, we leave that as is now and perhaps uh if Attorney Vrasky finds something or something we could.
As Lisa stated.
Yeah, this is actually.
I would, at a minimum, I would say any, all entries shall be um, you, you, you're going to be throwing safety equipment. Uh, because it's not just limited to building, this is agents. So you want them to be hired at. It says that. Yeah, so you got.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, I'm just.
Yeah, no, it's good, we got that, that was one.
That is.
It has, it has, it actually.
That's, and that's one we worked together.
And so we didn't let go of its chance, and so don't find you.
Let's move on.
Um. Uh, this is regarding peer review on costs, uh, applicants are not, probably aware of the problems that we've had in the past. But the board has taken a position at the request of staff that um basically want, we want to have a balance maintained um during the construction period so that we don't have to staff as a uh repeatedly remind for replenishment, hold up the process, et cetera, et cetera. So we um require a, a maintenance of peer review.
What is that, it's inspection fees for the outside consultants to then have to revise.
So, right, so as we have, like, we're going to have inspectors that is, as uh were commensurate. There's going to be um inspection for periodic play on behalf of the town. Those uh, those are responsibility of the builder to um.
This is a thought of no building, only a political, is that right?
Yeah, this is, this is to do, this is to do with um um peer review site, a site inspection during the construction. But like, right now, we have two or three projects underway. When we'll have an inspection, we still have one every week, for example, to Maynard property. Every week, there's a, the cost of earth we take out of that ton. In the past, we didn't ask for money ahead of time and it slowed down everything. Put the, you know, ended up making a, you put the town in a, a, another level of complication. And it slowed one profit roll off.
My concern with that is how many inspections and how often and who gets the call to the, and how much does that involve? So, so Adam's coming in it from the point of view, specifically, he would pay for the, the standard fee
Mm-hmm.
for, for pulling the permit, and that includes the plumbing inspector doing the inspection, rough and final. So you, I think Adam asked me, what is, what is this covering, something beyond that typical?
Yeah, this is basically, I thought this would be the town engineer base for going out.
I'm, I'm going to say, what you say, my, my problem with the vagueness of this is it's it, they're, they're, at their discretion, they could go weekly, why would, like, I don't want to incur a fee every week for without some type of plan for that.
I, I, there's, um, in this case, I think.
For nothing is done and.
Yes.
Checks every week and the.
No, you're right, I, I, I see your point, I think that's a draft, the couple down was to map this out, I think that is what. Um and probably if, it could just as easily be reversed, read number eight now. And I think that answers your question. Um.
Well, you know, typically, Bill, you would put a condition in that says prior to present of construction, defined usually as a really low bar, there will be a meeting of the applicant and the town staff at which work will be sequenced and inspections will be specified at certain points.
I think that's it, I, I think we, I think that is, but yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So, Bill, is number seven detail on the last line of number eight? About the same inspections without your own?
Um, this one is.
The way we number eight is in the, it's
Yeah.
Engineer review of site plan only, so not
Right.
Not engineering review of scale work inside of the building, just site plan, right?
Well, yeah, but number eight, what Bill's asking for is good, if there's going to be work done on public on uh roadwork within the site, it's going to be approved by D P W. Uh, and, and they're going to have um uh, send a town engineer out there to do the inspections. Uh, and that's going to be responsibility of the applicant to reimburse. Um, in some cases, D P W for, uh, I think for like, I don't want to speak for them, but I believe if they're going out for like a water hookup, that's included typically, and there are inspections for that. But this sort of thing where it, it's, um, it has to be, um. I think that's pretty, that, that's, that's disgusting, I mean, activities of stabilization, is, it looks like the same to me, basically, construction schedule. Uh, based on the construct, so we have to determine a construction schedule, which I think is further down. Um, as we go along, I think these probably can be sequenced better, but um, these are not new.
I guess like, I mean, a, a balance of seven thousand dollars for that number seven thing, I should say. How many inspections would seven thousand dollars do, and again, I just don't, I'm not comprehending how many
Mm-hmm.
times it would have to come, and if it's a free range, you know, if one day I want to go check on the site, give me five hundred dollars. The P, I, that, there's just no.
Well, let, let's, let's run through these and, and if it's not answered by then, perhaps we can come up with something that's, that's agreed. But I, I believe it's addressing.
It is, it's in the next one with, you got A through L if you just.
Yeah, I, I think, it seems to be, yeah.
Those are the various.
Yeah.
Oh, and there's, by the way, there's the job site safety specifically included.
Yeah, yeah, we have, they'll be on the inspector.
Right. And, um.
And is Green going to be the civil inspector? Or are you going to go offshore and find another person?
Uh, I, I, I would, unless there was something unforeseen, I would anticipate we would maintain the contract agreeing for this. And uh, so that's, that's.
It's hard, it's, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to
Well.
put a roadblock here, but it's just hard when it's periodic visits.
Yeah.
Periodic visits, I, we, I just, I know what uh Green is actually was, what we just did.
Yeah.
And without having some type. And without having some type of, like, if I walk into somebody tells, they know how much I am an hour before I get to the door.
Uh-huh.
It's hard for me to.
I can appreciate that. All right, let's we we'll come back to that. Um. If we just scoot over with Chris.
Go up.
I mean, downtown and eleven. Um. I think we could tighten up and 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 make your stuff. Uh, uh, more agreeable if if it's not covered in here. Um. Okay, um. The. Conservation Commission, we're just saying that there's other. Agencies and entities that that. Supplement this and are necessary to actually construct the project that you're well aware of. What and and this this talks about conservation commission, uh, in in this case, it was up before by our trust, we have um. For in terms of the development agreement and so on. Uh, but it's just pointing out that this is, you know, this this is maybe the end of this board's review, but there's still other. It's not approving for other boards. Um. This is something we I wanted to talk to, um, we we did. We we should figure out how parking during construction will be for safety.
Bill, can you back up to ten for a second?
Uh-huh.
The reference to fire priority issuance of any building permits.
Mm-hmm.
That refers only to. The cons of order conditions in the storm water management permit.
That's that's. Yeah, the the in the um. Yeah, same, but the minimum that you're gonna have to get, you know, is before building permit.
All right, and then, Chris, I have a. Have to go query here. So when we say. Something has to happen before issuing a building permit. Um, if there was like site demo or site stabilization, none of that technically is a building permit, right? So we wouldn't be preventing that, would we?
From my point of view, that's definitely not thought of as a building permit. Painting or something. Stabilize the diet. They're they're, from my from my experience, that gets into gray areas depending on the size and scope.
Alright.
In the town, in the city, um. That's not my, I I don't think that's the intent here at all. I think the intent here is simply. Building permit for the construction of the building.
Maybe we should maybe make that a little better.
Like, that's definitely the intent. And if for some reason, you know, let's assume this all gets signed, passed, whatever. If, you know, I found that there is some site work that was being held up. Because some of that building permits that would not make me happy. So that would not be in line without. I read, I read that.
I'll tidy that condition up. Make that clear, cuz it's important, particularly in those locations, dude. Um, ADA is um. That's law anyway, I mean, but uh.
Let's, well, the DEA compliant.
Yeah, that's.
But eleven is. Um.
Oh, yeah.
You have a general sense of what? The parking for construction workers and things of that nature might be. For this yet, or is it too early to begin?
I mean, it's too early to really. See how this will play out. I've personally been on projects like this and understand your concerns. Um, because. If three plumbers show up with three plumbers, then it's to a site that has framers and electrician and minimal parking, like it it becomes an issue, so.
I think on this site, my concern is just guys parking trucks on Walton Street or on Powder Mill Street because it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I don't think we would allow that at all. I I would, I would probably work with. You know, leaving space. In the in the in the lot and in trying to stagger the trades as they come in. And if that becomes a point where we have too many, then looking for, you know, even maybe talking to, um, if you move across the street, if we could use their parking lot. That would happen, so like that.
Also, this is essentially saying, can't park. I mean, the parking and equipment must be on the technical side.
Unless there's like a big, a lot like a delivery with a boom truck or something, they can't get on the side at some point, then we have to get a police detail to.
Maybe that's something we should add in there. That, because we have had problems with that and um, that. In the event, um.
So, police details will be required for. Or police details would be required.
Yeah, I I think that would be, that would make sense.
I mean, I don't even know if we condition that because that's essentially. Town requirement anyways.
Make it be a different for us. I mean, we've got stuff for that before.
But it's very straightforward. Does that make sense? Any, any further discussion on these three items, ten along twelve?
So do that, I'll put police detail?
Yeah, mention that, um, but alternatively, which details. Um, required. Thirteen, during construction, applicants, agents, employee, they'll perform through. Laws. Um, so this adds construction activities from. Starting at seven AM. Um, through Friday and Saturday, starting at nine AM.
Yeah.
Construction activity. Positioning truck before seven AM, does that count for the unit?
The position, any type of movement will be considered generally stupid construction activity. Um. You know, sitting in, sitting in your truck and drinking coffee is not construction activity, but if you're moving women. That would be considered construction. Because it's supporting.
Big, big line of delivery trucks.
That would be applicable to number eleven, I believe, as well, like you're just talking. Um, no Sundays and federal holidays. Um, usually we put state holidays into. I thought, no.
Well, we that one, we did, and I I remember how that went. Um, it's up to the board. We took them out at. Uh, Parker Street because it. I don't know. But it. It's up to you. Yeah, it was Patriot's Day and um.
There's one other.
Juneteenth.
Never mind.
Yeah.
No work commenced. Um. No work shall commence nor shall any permit.
Yeah, it's just a.
New compliance. Um. Sorry, Bill, I'll let you continue.
You're doing good.
Number fifteen.
Um, the fifteen, um. At, well. I mean, this is said there's a a something that was. Turned out not to be the case with something the board based their decision on. Um, they may require an amendment. Um, that this board also has is you you. May not know, Adam, but the board also, uh, as they, um, adopted. Uh, a a what I consider efficient. Determination process for minor, major. Uh, minor or major modification of projects go along, where sometimes they can make a change administratively, publicly determined to be a minor. But. It this is just saying that they. You know. If there's something that's not accurate or incomplete or refined, that's erroneous. They may want. They reserve that right. Uh, twenty sixteen is just the state law, um, I think, uh, as well, but you have, uh. Two years to. From the the date, effective date of your permit. To begin, um, constructive activities. Sometimes things happen with the board was very reasonable with that. But, um.
We have not, we have not denied a request to extend that.
No, but we but. We would expect that you just aware of that, and if it came for whatever reason, hopefully done, COVID did it, I mean, we got a bunch of them COVID and. State extended them anyway, but. Uh, please step forward.
So is that special permit or really permit? Question. There's so in seventeen, it's like that. Those are perfect, you have six months. Um, so we've had people come in for various reasons during COVID, particularly the need extension of twenty four months. We have not denied any of those requests in that. Okay, so.
How come there were twenty four conditions in the draft I got, there are seventeen that.
Because if you look, that's where it's a draft, if you look, you'll see that my numbering jump, the the dollar jump.
Is it?
No, yeah.
What conditions have you added?
Yeah, uh, the conditions I added were the ones that, uh, with the formal housing trust, but I'm gonna ask, uh, I'll I'll. Craft. The ones we made.
Okay.
Here's the ones I have from tonight. Okay, you ready?
Yeah.
All right, I have that a, um. Light will be added to southwest corner of the building. On powder mill, uh, it's gonna be a matching scotch to what the others are. Two, uh, the the guardrail or I have screening that designed to block lighting. Uh, at the butter's, uh, property must be, um. Submitted, and we haven't decided where it's gonna be, a chair or board approval or staff approval, so we need to determine that. Make sure that's okay. So in other words, the piece that's gonna go to take the place. Of the of the trees while they're growing.
Yeah, the screening aspect, I think, Chris, the structural safety aspect, it's a good.
Yeah, I I I'm not, I can't be responsible for it. But is there a structural safety element here?
Wait a second.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, maybe I wrote.
With screening and structural, so. Maybe times that.
We don't have any detail of that. Piece of it.
Right, right, this is to need it, okay.
Okay, so, um, very, very few will. Approve. Structural safety elements of guardrail, I will prove. Um, the the span.
Here we have. Approved.
Protectually.
Okay, approve. So we'll send it to Green for that one.
That's that's a simple, they've sent over its back. They have to make sure that it's just fifty compliant for a parking lot, for a commercial parking lot. Very simple.
Sitting at six feet above.
That it's just. Generally.
Um. Now, the the next one was a landscape plan. A maintenance plan would be submitted prior to CEO, understanding that it's gonna go to conservation committee, so that was why we did that. But you'll you'll get that to a set at one point. Boys, yeah. It's pretty straightforward, um. Okay, number four, access gate here. Um, we're gonna. We're gonna, uh, the board's first choice would be a roll-up gate. That will be aesthetically in harmony with the structure. But that's going to be subject to the fire chiefs. Review and approval if. There is a problem. Uh, from fire chief. How do we wanna? How would we wanna handle that? Let's just. The worst case, so.
How would you like that? No, the, okay, well.
Oh.
The applicant will. Provide alternative based on the chief's comments and chair will. Okay, provide the chair, okay.
Um, the draft, the DA condition we got, we're good with that, and okay, that everybody's good with that one. Okay, and now. Um, that that's it. And we have the detail, we're gonna have the detail and, um.
Just to get back to the condition that Adam still on the top of, but.
Yes, yeah.
You have, you have, you have a housing authority condition on there. That we that we talked about tonight.
Well, yeah, let's go to again.
And then one other item. Um. Do we need, uh, condition this for DPW approval? Cuz I don't know if they, do they, have they? Taken a look at the final plans?
Well, we could put it in there. I mean, it's always good, just I I think Adam knows, but I don't think, it 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 can only help.
They provided in input on the. The. Version of this application back in November. And they determined that there was sufficient wire, etc.
Based on the preliminary, but on the numbers that that were consistent.
It's just, it should be for the current project, what I think it appears in.
Yeah, and and well, there's gonna be, you DPW, as Adam knows. DPW. DPW has their own process that Adam's gonna go through, so we can put.
Just just condition it.
Yeah, okay, right. Um. Yes.
What other item for conditions? I mean, what about how long the sidewalk can be? Kind of service.
What?
We don't wanna have another. Hoover issue.
I didn't hear what you said, sorry.
I wonder how long the sidewalk can be out of service because of.
Oh. Well.
Cuz it would be very problematic if.
That would be bad.
Cuz there's nowhere to cross. And certainly nowhere accessible.
Well, there's a that long list of A to L has paving operation. Drive log. Um, specified as things that are subject to. An inspector. But I I I think this all goes to the chairman's point that that's a condition that we gotta. Come back to the.
In the in the nature of, um, Mr. Crancher commented in that. Um. You, how do we ensure that members of the public can remain safe and still? Have. At adequate similar access that the sidewalk used to provide. Which is the point. Typically, you would have. Close the sidewalk, have crossings to the other side and things of that nature. Um, but that is that typically done. And reviewed by DPW if you have to call.
Hopefully, it's done with with DPW, like at Grubers, which, you know, went on. Certainly longer than we wanted, but the 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 route. And the. Uh, crosses there were handled by DPW.
Right, but they failed in that.
I think they.
They failed totally in.
Completely closed. You know, that's the problem.
I don't, I don't. And that against. Law now. And I'm saying, you know, closing a piece of long damn street, there's a way around that, you know, you go across the street, you know, the. Level or whatever, you can get around that, but that piece on powder mill. There's no. Option if you're moving up and down that powder mill sidewalk.
So what I found useful, whether I'm on the private site or the public site, is a construction management plan that has to be prepared. In conjunction with your folks. And the applicant. And all of this sequencing is specified in order. So that everybody understands what's hap- what happens next and how it happens. And it includes things like. What will be inspected by whom and how much money they get to spend for the inspection? So typically, somebody in this seat wants there to be a scope of services and a not to exceed amount of money. Because otherwise, I know from thirty eight years. They go offshore, somewhere somewhere Hawaii and come back with a big bill, and I'm not saying that what happened here. But it has happened, so you really wanna be able to put the inspector on a leash. And if he needs more money, he needs more money, that's not in dispute. But it would be, he knows what the bill is gonna be for this inspection. Or, you know, if it's a routine repeated inspection, it's five hundred bucks a pop or something like that. And now he can budget for that without having to worry either. And if the inspector needs more money, makes a reasonable request for more money and the planning board and the applicant. Work it out, or there's a.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, but are we talking two different things here?
I've got, he's he's broadening discussion. Um, to include. Site activities and other safety. Through a construction safety or construction manager.
But but I I and I I get, and so, you know. The the idea of a construction management plan and requiring that. To cover that, I understand, but I I I guess I'm not sure what the board's concern was if we've moved beyond. The powder mill issue, though, I I I mean, I.
Well, it would be, it would be anticipated in the construction management. So the sidewalk have to be shut down on powder mill. Which is readily anticipated.
Yeah.
You know, you provide.
And that's a, I think that's a really advantageous way to handle it. I could try not to. We should, the board should not be involved in the. Day-to-day details and figuring out. How construction means and methods will occur, but the point is we want to ensure. Access and safety. Which can be addressed through a construction manager.
Which we probably didn't have Hoover, Steve.
We did not.
But it's good, provide something like, you anticipate the sidewalk will need to be closed down during a period of time when you're looking forward, right? And then you can say, okay, maybe DPW suggest, uh. Barriers, we know whatever.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You don't wanna show up one day and have the street closed down.
No, that, and Bill's right, I mean, we, it's, that's, that's a horrific place to have it closed down.
Could be a modern white walk that don't give, there'd be no safe way to do that, there is sidewalks.
Okay, so how do I, how do I?
So I. I'm gonna go back into my experience and then let me try this. So number seven, I think, can stake as it's just referring to. A basically a, um, a fund that's set up ahead of time, um. I don't actually like the seven thousand dollar number, it's a little weird to me, I'd rather five, I think we'd be fine.
We went, we we were a ten, that's why.
It's fine, like, seven weird, so five or ten?
Thirty nine.
No.
Yeah, I knocked it down from ten for a couple of a while back.
But then, I think we can combine.
Is the eight sort of anticipates that you're jumping into rescinding in progress before that?
That's right.
And I think A should say, the applicant shall schedule a construction management conference with the town engineer and other staff. In order to sequence and manage the development of the project.
And I think we can combine eight, generally speaking, eight, nine.
Yeah.
Eight, nine.
And I think there ought to be some discussion about whether or not that's coming out of a permit fee. Or whether or not that's an inspection fee that's surcharged. Have to go down that, with some of it looks like one, some of it looks like the other.
On, um, the the, I don't wanna speak for DPW on. Uh, theirs, but on ours, I can, I am. All this stuff here, we're we're doing, we're we're, the town is gonna be sending out. A peer reviewer to during constructions, that, uh, for inspections, is going to be billed to the applicant.
Okay, if it's a peer reviewer, I don't have a problem.
It it it, well, no, I I'm sorry, our peer reviewer, who, you know, our site inspector, is going to be typically our peer reviewer. In this case, or maybe in town.
An employee or of the town, or is it an offshore consultant?
As of right now, um. That's a good question, we have a goal of depending on certain thing, we have. For our current sites that are under construction, we have a third party that does it. They, um, it's specified, they go out. Probably once a week, every two weeks, or whatever, they they coordinate and they. Uh, for the engineering inspections, um. Building inspection is not part of it. And and, um.
So, um, number nine is referring to site plan. That's the point, point is just to ensure that there's some oversight, that the site plan is being constructed. With conformance to the site plan, so it it is, it's limited to site plan. And that's the point of this. This is not about building permits, this is not about inspection permits, this is just about site management.
And they're gonna want, the 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 engineer.
Right, we we we, you know, we need, we just need some checks and balances to ensure the site plan being constructed correctly.
That's true, but.
So if there's better language for that, I'm happy to hear it, but back to the, I think, larger point is that, I think. I think there's, there's, so there's two items here, there's, I I agree that a better approach here is to. Um, condition this as, um, that can, will will prepare a construction management plan. Right, I would actually call it a construction management and safety plan, um, and that will be approved by town staff. And then.
That would have to be, we have to specify who on that one, and that that.
It should be, it should be. OMS and DPW. Um, because a lot of this will be the interaction between the public around the site. And it should be OMS because there will be some discussion about site activities on site.
The number, it's actually worth, but if you do a pre-meeting with the appropriate people, and then when you hear from them, you put your construction in. But you can walk in with it, it's gonna be good.
And that's, that's up, I, my point would be, that's up to the applicant and how the applicant wants to approach it, but the point is the condition. Should be construction manager and safety plan. And then, number nine, um.
So, Chris, the way I see number nine, I think, the way you're headed with that, and the way my brain works. There's a lot of points there, the periodic visits is what's really driving me. Let's say there's like three things we can check off. And they're gonna be exposed because we really need to cover this more management right now, we're working up here on the foundation and the pudding, like. Why is the, why does that, they could technically come every day if they wanna inspect something separately, or we could say, here's like three or four things, come check it.
So what I was thinking is that this, this should be more about final inspections. Um, just, so with a plumbing plumbing permit, there's rough inspection final. For site plan compliance, I don't really see any reason to have some rough inspection. Um, there there could be, but.
Yeah, if we have run into this, we, I can think of a couple of projects to go.
But I, but what I like to do is mimic the building inspection sort of cadence, which is that. We put it on the applicant to say when rough inspection is supposed to move perfect, then what, when final inspection is supposed to occur. And that's, that's the, that's the construction manager and site. Um, I don't, you know, I think periodic is very vague, but I would like to mimic it more towards. Um, how building inspections are done, maybe rough final, but at. At the applicant's or at the construction team's discretion.
Yeah.
We need final.
This.
I think my point to that was, though, is is a lot of those things are gonna, each one of those could have a rough, you know, final stage. If if there's a way to write this that it's like, we can, we can get eight of these things looked at on one site, because we're roughed and that's. Like, instead of coming, I'm gonna check out the, uh, the so- the so- plan today, and then tomorrow I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna check out.
Maybe we can put language here that says. Applicant will determine and request the schedule for it.
Which can be in the construction management.
Can we say that, like, applicants will. Work towards consolidation of periodic visits. As. There, as it's it's appropriate for, you know, the the state that they're in, or whatever.
As like read upon interval.
Yeah.
Someone's gonna wanna waste their time, inspections, you know, either, I mean, they're probably busy as well, I understand. But what I'm getting is for, for the special, for for the decision. All I want is to ensure that we're going to get peer review oversight. Where the final conditions essentially for the site, that's the point.
That's correct, and I, but I, what happens is kind of, I think, partly beyond the scope of this, a little bit. And I know we have a lot of language in here because of previous experience. Right, we're we're ready to come back, uh, but remember, the board, we're gonna make some changes, good stuff with.
Um, I would say that applicants, that what I would say is. I might, I would like to get rid of eight through whatever, um.
That was done by town engineer, but that.
I get that, and what I'd like to say is, scope and schedule will be, will be determined in the construction management and safety plan. And approved by town staff and applicant. Right, like, schedule will be determined in the construction management safety plan. That way, you get clarity on scope and schedule, town is clear on scope and schedule, I don't want the board to determine scope and schedule, it's not. We don't have the technical. We we're, we're not in the seat of technical experts right here.
And well, to, and and how we play, and this is, obviously, I don't mean that except as a miracle. But, I mean. Why would we want to handcuff the town staff because. An applicant that we're all responsible for, or, you know, supervising, ensuring something's going great. We don't want, well, I don't want you, you know, to come out and look at this today, or whatever the case is, and something's being. Developed that, you know, we have a problem with the next day, or, I I mean. And because, well, you guys are out today, and I'm not trying to beef the CD, you know, I'm just saying, these are issues that we've run into.
Why we develop it in the manager.
Okay.
Right, and those concerns can be addressed in the manager. Okay, so basically, I'm saying, this can be reiterated in management, right?
But you, but but coming to the agreement, the manager plan, you know, on that, I mean, is.
It's an interdisciplinary review team that negotiates it with the applicant, and when there's an agreement. You put it together and that's the work schedule for the project, along with the responsibilities for paying fees and timing and all the rest of it.
I I agree, and I'm sure we could come up with something like that, but I would be. It seems to me, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, but we're putting in a a new. Potential situation where we could end up with delays for whatever reason, this staff doesn't agree with. An inspection schedule or whatever the case may be, I I I don't know, I just don't wanna end up in that situation, I don't like it.
I think there's open potential for delay, um, but the point is that. This, this can be used as a proactive tool, solve, you know, potential exit challenges, solve. Things like that, that, I don't think we can fully debate in plenty of ways.
I I agree, and I I I totally, I think that's a, a great way to go forward with construction, I, um. The the manager plan, I'm just uncomfortable with taking. The idea of, okay, well, you know, we were already, we don't, why do we need to inspect this?
So the thing is, that. It would, it would be easier to, and again, we talked about this with the DPW, but like. If all of that site specific engineered peer review stuff needs to be done, there was a dollar amount associated to it. I'd say come to the site every day.
No, I I get that, I I I totally appreciate that, and I'm more, and I mean, that's a conversation. I think we do have to, but I I'm not talking about the dollars and cents necessarily, I'm talking about the the scope. Um, I I like that it says this is what is going to be inspected, so somebody all of a sudden is like, why the heck? Are you looking at, you know, why are we worrying about this, and maybe it's just because of vast ranges, but I've been doing this a long time too. And 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 and, um, I just. I'd like to find a a.
I will say, if you look at the language in Mr. Robowski, maybe this is the point of review. That that line at the top says inspections by the town include, but may, maybe the. It just says inspected by the town may include. But may not be limited to.
Well, I think the in inspections, scope. And timing. Will be, uh, put forth in the construction management. And get rid of the eight that say periodic visits, because it could be more specific.
I, maybe that's the way to handle this, yeah, cuz this language is just that, these things may be included. Periodic visits are not really helpful towards the decision.
I agree, I agree, it's, that's not a good way to put periodic. But, yeah, I I I agree with that, but I mean.
So, so my battery is running out, so I might lose the screen.
And I'm I'm not trying to be, you know, more goes, I'm not particularly obstinate.
Yep, I say, I totally get it, but to be very clear, my intention, the board can shine, and if they want to correct this, but my intention is just to ensure that. We have review of the site plan. That these things are proactively addressed ahead of time, so that all applicant in town know what scope and scheduling budget is. Uh, and that the elements of, in the public realm are addressed, particularly access. And that's the intent. So, that's on record, we can always go back to the recorded video, that's the intent of what we're trying to do here.
I've got recent experience with this in a town down on the south coast, my client, frankly, didn't know how to put a construction management. But the exercise was well worth it, and it's now going, you know, like. Synchronicity.
I I I agree, I I I have no, no issue at all with that.
My only concern, let's do this, let's remove the periodic.
Okay.
periodic visits, just, it's a list of of just potential scope, right? That's it, we're just talking about what potential scope is.
Do you wanna add to that second one? Construction management plan will detail. Inspections by the town. Including but not. Limited to, we keep the list.
So, that would be fine, and then number eight, number eight, it should, bill number eight, should reference. The construction management plan, as we discussed.
Okay, and and I, um, okay.
So number eight, to be clear, number eight conditions, we recommend, and we're prepared, agreed to. Approved by town staff on this, W. Number nine can generally be left at is, but remove the periodic visits, and add that, uh, the scope will be determined. And the construction safety management, management, safety plan, that's great, and those are the changes. And does that make sense to the board?
Well, you understand, and and my only concern, I don't want to. Have shifting sands on what's going to be inspected, who's going to pay for. And these types of things, so that's the one thing I'm, I'll fashion it, I wanna buy you, and I'm sure we can work together, that's my concern, I cannot have. OMS all of a sudden being responsible for five thousand dollars, because I thought a sidewalk had to be looked at. And somebody disagreed with.
Yep.
I can't be.
And then they, they have that concern too as applicants, because they want certainty on the data as well, so.
And that, this list came from. The list of A through L, where the, I'm sorry, where did the list come from with all of these inspections?
Oh, this was, we use this more or less on, um. Main crossing, I think on one fifteen Main Street, it's more like standard one, but we've, we've. A lot of it. But anyway, I I've taken up on it, I think I could come up with something that the board is good with, I'll run it by Attorney Bobrowski. Everybody understands, I think, what their concerns are, and, um.
So any more questions or comments on the conditions that we just got? Overall. Um, Jim and Jim or Net, do you have anything to add on conditions?
No, not for me.
Thank you.
Not for me either, Chair.
Thank you, Net. Um, Bill, at this point, what other items do we need to cover for tonight?
Um, well, we've we've gone over the the the, uh, consistency, uh. What what the board has to consider as a criteria for the 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 special permit. Um, we've, we have to go with their waivers, are there any waivers, there's one waiver. Bill, I have this on here.
I have waiver one.
Fifteen hundred square feet per residential unit.
Right, oh yeah, that's right, that's for the density bonus.
Right, and then the other one's the parking lot.
Um, so I have wa- waiver one. The waiver, um, for minimum lot area of of fifteen hundred square feet per residential units on the screen there.
Correct, and and, um.
We were two. Relief of, um, the fifty four parking space requirement.
Right. But there was a third one on there, so?
I don't see a third one, no.
Good, right, yeah, so that, that's just granting the the waiver for the the density bonus, the YOD density bonus. And for the parking, um, reduction. The Y O D density bonus and for the parking um reduction.
Um, Bill, did we condition that the D A would, the D A is uh needs to be finalized?
Yeah, that was um, okay.
Um, any any further input from the board before closing? Okay, I will make a motion to close the hearing.
I can bet.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor by a voice to close the hearing, um, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie.
Yeah.
I'm I'm yes, uh, Jeff, you're not voting, um, Jim?
Yeah.
And that.
Yes.
Okay, so that's that's a closure. All right, I'm giving you one second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May make a motion that uh uh the board scheduled a time at our next scheduled. Uh, meeting for a uh discussion uh on and per. Uh, discussion on the permitting processes for this particular project.
Um, are you asking that we vote for for the special permit at a at a future hearing?
I I'm suggesting that we have the discussion and the vote at another hearing. It's already. After nine o'clock, we have other business for the night.
Um, I, the the applicant has asked if we can vote tonight. Jim and I would like to. Um, meet that request, if that's okay with the board. Um, I think we can get through this pretty quick, Jim.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, so let's start the site plan. Um, I'll I'll first make a motion to approve the site plan and then we can discuss. Do you have a second?
Second of all.
Um, so the motion is an issue in second for um. Approval of the site plan, uh, any discussion on the site plan for approval? So this is, this is simply site plan, um.
There will be a criteria after your answer, in general.
Now, Bill.
Site plan is is a, there's not really a a a criteria the board is reviewing for is consistency. With zoning by law. And ensuring that the uh regulations are. Um, adhered to.
Technically, it's under ten point five point one, but yes, it's that. Um, we find that the site plan generally speaking, say, you know, the item of lighting and traffic flow and. Pedestrian access, um, and parking. We we could sort of town guidelines, yeah. Um, any discussion on site plan? Um, hearing done, I'll take a vote to vote vote for the approval of site plan, um. Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Um, I'm uh, yes, uh, Annette?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Okay. Um, that's four one for approval of site plan though.
Now, we should do waivers, sure.
Yes. Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to approve waiver one. Does everyone understand waiver one?
That's the density.
Um, okay, so. Um.
Oh, yes.
It it's to allow residency unit for a project for a total of thirty-six units in compliance with section nine point four point five. Reduced lottery requirements to the allocation and has uh nine quarterly units within the project.
And they'll continue to have no development.
Um, well, the special permit is, but in the waiver would not be applicable unless there's a special permit, right?
Okay, got you.
Uh, all in favor of waiver number one, um, by voice, uh, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Annette?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
And I'm a yes. Um, Jim may ask, uh, are you voting no because you want further discussion on these items at a future hearing?
No, I I'm voting no because we've had so much discussion, bits and pieces uh. Uh, in and out and so on and so forth. I really want to see the the what we're approving. In written form before I can make a good determination.
Um, hearing that, how would the applicant like to proceed? Would you like to continue or again? Okay. Um. We will, uh, thanks, Jim, for being um open and honest about that. Um, we will. Uh, I will accept your motion um for for continuance, Jim, if you would like to make it again.
I would uh make that motion.
All right, go ahead. I wanted to continue voting for the. Oh, you want to continue to vote? Yeah. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Jim, we have some confusion here in town. Um. Uh, the applicant would like to proceed with our discussion and voting, um, and. The the applicant would like a decision tonight is the request. So anything you can do, Jim, to help out with a decision tonight, I think. That is the request that that we're being made. Do you understand that?
I understand that, but I'm not ready to make a uh decision. Uh, follow reasons stated first.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Uh, we have it. Four to one of would carry. Uh, assuming everything remained four to one, the three to two would not. It would on the site plan. But it wouldn't on a special permit. And then this will be um.
Okay, well, I I'll ask the rest of the board. Does the rest of the board have the requisite information to make that decision, determination to? On the special permits for for the D O D?
With the list of conditions, yeah.
With the list of conditions, yeah. Uh, Annette, do you, do you have the requisite information to vote tonight?
Yes.
About you, Bill Crenshaw?
Yeah, I appreciate Jim's viewpoint. It'd be a heck of a lot easier. Make the call.
Okay. Um, then we will proceed, um. Bill, I lost my screen, so.
Uh, next is a waiver. Uh, number two uh for uh. From section six point one point ten point three, providing relief to allow forty parking spaces. Um, for fifty-four required for the product through production fourteen states.
Right, I will make a motion to approve waiver number two as stated.
All thank you, Matt.
All in favor of waiver number two by voice, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yeah.
Annette?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Um, next.
Um, okay, it is second uh.
So we need to do special for the picture.
And yeah, we were gonna do, uh, we were going to go. Through design guidelines as well. That that was just my guy or anything. So sort of site plan, I would be the appropriate picture, I think. Okay, and what this would be for the board, um. Is determining that the project demonstrated consistency with section ten point six. Design review, the zoning, the bylaws, and the planning board regulations. Um, are the, I remind the board that the uh consultant um through uh Green, which was Arrow Smith. Uh, Arrow Speed Architecture. Um, has determined that this um. Was consistent and uh meets the design guideline approval, so I request a vote, a vote on that.
All right, I'll make a motion that the site plan and design presented through the hearing. Um, meets the intention of the the design guidelines. For both engineer and architectural review. Is that the motion?
That's correct.
Well, thank you, Matt.
A main discussion on design review, like that is. All in favor, uh, my voice, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
And I'm a yes.
Yeah. Um, now we have, we have two special permits, a criteria to. Um. Review that we we the applicant's already reviewed the um. The criterion, but the purpose of the special permit uh is in the end. Uh, the 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 law provides a certain parts of um. The review to the board to consider in making their decision. Does the do the benefit that way, the negative impacts of the request? So we have a a a the the downtown overlay district special permit. Which has its own unique um criteria which we've gone over and then um. The what I guess we'd call a standard special permit uh under um state chapter forty-eight. Uh. And that um, so what the board will be approving. Um, be a a special permit um. That allows the multifamily with reduced lot area. Uh, in finite uh that using the findings that were um. Uh, reiterated by Attorney Bobrowski. Um, and determine that the the findings are valid and the vote in. Uh, support or not in support of the request of special permit, so. D O D special permit, but that allows a multifamily. Um, project with a reduced lot area as authorized by the zone.
And you just review the sections of the. The criteria.
What sections?
Nine point.
Yeah, ten point four point two, the zoning by law.
Yeah.
And uh, uh, section nine point four. Which is uh applicable to the downtown overlay district. Um, I agree to that through them again, but it's I don't like.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve a special permit based on findings. Of of this hearing and that they meet the criteria of special permit um listed in ten point four point two and. And in section nine point four of our zoning by law.
And as presented by the applicant.
By the accepted. Through the presentation of the applicant and other information during the session. And so the findings will be entered into the. Um, also, um. As was also. Um, as as listed of the conditions that were provided and discussed in the evening and modified. Right?
Correct.
Yeah.
All thank you, Matt.
Um, discussion on this, um. That's um, I I would prefer to hear generally how board members are feeling before I before I call a vote. Um, I I I find that the criteria generally being met under both, but I would like to hear from others as well.
I feel the same way.
All right, Bill?
Um.
Like Jim said, it'd be really nice to see in front of us, but we know a hundred percent, but I think with the conditions that. We went through tonight, I think, because we got.
Um, and and that do you generally find um that the um. Conditions are being met for this, or do you have any further questions for discussion for the board? Um, you're on, Annette, if you would mind.
No, the conditions are being met, I believe.
Um, Jim, would you like to add anything to the discussion at this point?
No, I've I've said my piece.
Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it. Um, so I I find that the conditions are being met in both for the D O D and the overlay, and I feel the conditions um. Uh, spell out um what needs to occur in the future, but also what our intention is with the special permit. Um, and so that being said, I'll I'll take a vote, um, by voice, uh, Bill Crenshaw. Yes, Natalie?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
And I'm a yes. That's four one for the uh special permit for the D O D and uh ten point four. Um, other, is there other business on this topic?
Um, no, I will craft a decision. I'm going to ask uh E E to be for a little help on a couple of the conditions that you put in. I think you.
Yeah.
And I will share them with Attorney Bobrowski and um I think we come up with a good. We come up with a good set of conditions. It's where you look forward to helping in the the development agreement as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does anyone need a few minutes break before we look at the next second?
Yes.
We're gonna have five minute recess. Turn it nine thirty. The big one. What that? Muted?
Yeah. Well, I get um, we both order. Okay.
Maybe you're ready. But we do have one of our team members is online, if you can get it out. Okay.
Without what you mean, the site plan?
It's part of on presentation, the site plan is embedded in.
Alright, it's, it will really be a history or advocacy for this nameless site. I can get to the site.
And. Um I'll open up this public hearing uh for the Maynard High School uh project referring to bleachers. Um, this is on behalf of the town and tonight the um. I believe the applicant is being represented by Hunter's Associates, did I get that correct?
Yes, sir.
Would you please identify yourself and your team members for the record?
I'd be happy to, my name is Chris Hunter with Hunter's Associates, landscape architects and planners. Who've been engaged by the town of uh Maynard and the Maynard Public Schools for the project. With me is Craig Marchonda, um our civil engineer with Marchonda Associates. And joining us online is the uh Matthew Stewart. With Collier's um project advisor, uh the project OPM. And Matthew has a presentation that he will share and I will talk everybody through it real quick.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to that in a second, um if you, I understand, and you. You have co-hosting privileges to Matthew. Um what's the last name?
Good evening, everyone, can everybody hear me? I'm, I'm online, just wanna do a quick.
Uh I'll, I'll get back to you in a minute, Matthew, if you could just wait a second. Um, Bill, can you give the overview of the planning board's roles and responsibilities that are for tonight?
Sure, um and also um asked building commissioner Rick Asman to join as well, who's uh. Uh important, this, uh this is a um request for site plan. Amendment, it's limited for the high school, uh it's a, a involving the. Replacement of the bleachers uh. And uh installation of a um. Structure that will be um. I think the store again and snacks.
Definitely.
And what?
Definitely.
Bathroom, right. I forget that. Um, this is a, because this is a uh. Educational facility, public educational facility, the um planning board's scope is. Limited uh to certain uh criteria, certain criteria. Um. Just to kind of cap everybody up, um, we had this um. Project peer reviewed by uh one of the town's peer reviewers and they did provide a letter. Uh with some comments that um. The chair and uh sat went over, we thought some of it is probably out of the scope, I emailed the committee a line.
Okay.
Um, we did anticipate a, a bridged letter. Uh but um, but it has not been received yet for the gallon here, so the plan to make efficient use of the time would be um. Uh we will uh. Uh go over the applicant present, um we have building commissioner Asman um. Comment on how he feels that the, the uh, the board should limit their review to this. And I don't even go from there, um I would, I don't know if you have a copy of this printed copy.
I don't, okay, I haven't had a chance to read it, but I did receive it.
Yeah, okay. So with that, um I would ask uh, I turn it over to the applicant, I wish to hunt it, if you would. Or unless the board has any further questions, you think?
Does the board have any further questions about the school responsibility? Um yes, uh so I'll turn over the applicant for their presentation as. Uh keep in mind that our role is specifically site planning, welcome to present on. You know, the, the circumstances in general, but it's, it's not part of our purview, so our focus is on the site plan, so if you're. Presentation focuses on site plan as a whole.
Yeah, we've got a um presentation that would take me about fifteen, twenty minutes to get through, go through all the. Sheets and the plan set, um and there's, there's a part of it and a couple of details on the building. Um but before I do that, I just wanna make sure I'm. Was the building inspector gonna wait him before I do?
What, what would the board's pleasure be, would, it might be easier for building pressure from first?
You're welcome, yeah, that's fine, you can, you can have the building commissioner um advise us how to achieve, Bill.
Alright.
And still stand waiting.
Rick, can you hear us, are you?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Would you uh?
So.
Just get a briefing on it for the board?
Oh. Basically, um, the uh. Section, section three of forty eight uh limits the review capacity of the planning board relative to. Educational uses. And uh the recreational activity of the school is considered an extension of that educational use. And in such as has certain protections. So the planning, the planning board can reasonably review and regulate elements related to the development. Such as parking, lighting, uh circulation, but it can't force um. The applicant to, to have a special permit. And the best example of this would be if there was not adequate parking per our zoning. Our parking zoning requirements for this activity. But there was reasonable parking provided, or the parking that was provided was equal to what had been provided in the past for the same activity. You would have to, you would have to find that the parking provision was reasonable. And so the planning board is essentially reduced to just doing site plan review. And uh they, they cannot require special permits or a special waiver of the applicant for this project. It's, it's fairly straightforward that way, actually.
Thanks, Rick, I appreciate it. Um Bill, anything to add before we turn it over to the applicant?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, this is perfect, thank you.
Um I'm gonna ask Matthew if he could hear a screen and put up our presentation.
Sure, will do, I'll be uh, I'm Matt Sters, project manager, Colliers, be um curating the presentation uh for Chris to drive us through here this evening, we'll get right into it. Uh so I'll put up screen number two, uh can folks see the uh, the presentation on the screen?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, thank you, Matt, so um again, Chris Hunter, some good sports, uh now if you can move through the, the next few slides. Our project team includes uh myself, Craig Marchonda, our, our civil. We also engage F L S Associates to do wetland delineation and resort area. Uh delineation, uh I make consultants are electrical engineers. Geotechnical consultants are geotechnical engineers and colleagues which is, who manage with. Are the orange project manager. Permits that are required to this include, um we're here in front of you tonight for site plan review. Uh site plan review itself triggered a stormwater regulation, we requested a waiver. Uh from the conservation commission for that, I can certainly explain why, but it's, it was very much small linear. Introductions of impervious area um that were not vehicular and were all pedestrian in nature and very little of it was actually an increase in impervious area. On the site, so for those reasons, we presented it at six o'clock tonight to the. Conservation commission and they granted that waiver at that time. The other permit would be the water and sewer utility permit, which was submitted at the same time we spent site plan review. Um to uh Maynard DPW, that review is ongoing, uh but we spoke with Justin DiMarco several times. And I don't expect any um, any outstanding issues uh for the board. At that time, uh, thank you, Matt, Matt, you can, the next four slides are all aerials of the site that you can just kind of move through those, they're hot. Um the site includes the existing grandstands that you see um in the previous picture, thank you, Matt, um. And the walkways that would extend down to that new grandstand, the existing grandstand is nine hundred and fifty seats. That's important because the proposed grandstand is the same, it matches nine hundred and fifty seats. With the existing, um the press box will be a little bit bigger with the new structure and we'll have filming on the roof and um. And now I'll take the next slide. And the area just north of the track and field right now houses three basketball courts, those three basketball courts. Uh will remain, the stone building over on the right hand side of this picture will stay. And the uh existing concession and storage building on the left hand side of the porch will stay as well. The location of the proposed building will be just off to the left edge of the asphalt and it will straddle the asphalt and be about half on. Half off, um but all three basketball courts remain and the utilities uh can easily be brought to those locations. With that, Matt, we go into, oh, and then a photo of your existing bleachers. Um which are no longer serviceable and certainly don't need code, but those will come down and be removed. Thank you, Matt. Existing building uh will remain and will become entirely stored, right now it's used for concessions and storage, the concession function will be removed. Uh and this will be available for storage um for sports and facilities as well. We did geotechnical investigation on the site to understand the soils, um not only from a groundwater perspective, but for structural. For the grandstand itself and for the potential location of, of the building, so any of the red dots that you see are area where we did test bits. And born to understand the soils, um so we had that made as well, thank you, Matt. And now I'll take you through the, the plan set, it's a large plan set, so I'm gonna go reasonably quick, if I get to a sheet that you wanna stop at. Please let me know and I'll, and we'll stop. The existing conditions uh was surveyed by Marchonda Associates, the wetland resort areas that are over on the. Kind of the west side of the site adjacent to the high school driveway have been flagged. The buffer zones associated with those have been delineated as well, we reviewed that, that earlier this evening with your conservation committee and they. Um. Concur that work is outside the hundred foot offer and does not require a notice of intent or any other application, and they did waive the. The stormwater review based on the, on the limited scope of work. The uh, this plan shows erosion control and site preparation shows the limit of work. Location of erosion control and locations of, of excavation, um the bulk of the work is within. Paved areas or impervious surfaces now that would provide egress all the way from Great Road. Into where the uh, with the existing grandstand, which, which will be the, the proposed grandstand will be in the same place that the existing grandstand, we're gonna take it down. Rebuild in place, the building will be on the uh kind of west end of the basketball court. Thank you, Matt. This is a site layout plan, it shows the footprint and seating layout of the nine hundred and fifty seat bleacher and press box that fits um. Snugly between the existing track and the existing baseball field, um there is a, thank you, Matt. The uh, there's a walkway that comes around the backside providing handicap accessibility and accessible route. To the prep box and there will be a handicap lift bringing you up to the elevation of the press box as required by code. The walkway leaving from the grandstand and back towards the proposed building. Um will be an asphalt walkway that is again handicapped accessible, much of that um. Is in areas that are already paved, there are some areas of the new walkway that are. Contacted gravel or contacted earth that will now be uh paved so that the route to get from. The parking into the site over to the, to the bathrooms and over to the press box. All now will be code for ADA and be considered accessible and meet the criteria for accessible route. So the orange rectangle that you see on the left hand side is the footprint of the, the new building. And you can see the existing fieldhouse that stays in place there, the limit of the building is exactly what's shown in, in orange, some of the site work of line, line work that you see around that. By the gathering spaces and, and limits of pavement that, that surround that. And Matt, can I get you to scroll up the great road and just zoom in on that, on that bit of pavement there? The hatched area that you see here comes between the two existing stone piers that are there now, uh we're reusing that existing gateway. The area that's hatched will be new asphalt pavement, but that area is already a significantly compacted gravel area to the point that there are. When it rains, there are puddles and that it will hold water for literally days. Um so we're formalizing that, we will regrade it, pave it, make it accessible. And the accessible route will go all the way back across Great Road to the. Town parking lot on the opposite side where there are handicap spaces now. So the entire route, route coming from the handicap spaces owned by the Boys and Girls Club into the site, over the bathrooms and over the grandstand will now be accessible. And I will take the next one, I know, you know what, let's stay on, let me get you to go back on that for just a minute. This plan also um includes a zoning compliance schedule, we went through the entire dimensional criteria of bylaw. To show you how we comply, this, the scope is rather limited, things like setback and frontage, we easily meet on a site like this. Um, impervious surfaces and open spaces are also um correct, are well within the limits of, of the um. The zoning bylaws, so the site can provide, if the tables there could like to take a. Folks will look at it, and Matt, can I get you to just zoom in on the landscape portions of this plan, which are all by Great Road? This plan is also our landscape plan, as we looked at what we could do from a landscape perspective, we felt the best value. To be able to add some kind of landscape to this plan was really in the street state presence of Great Road. And by adding some street trees along Great Road, we have included the um. Uh the Princeton Elm, which is the, the new Dutch uh Elm, it's a resistant variety of Elm that's been produced. And we've added those street trees to try and add some spark turn characters more in effect of autumn, break out. Matt, I will take the next slide when you are ready. So the, enough, uh a close up view of the zoning compliance schedule, I won't take you through it point by point here, it's certainly part of the application. And it's on the layout and material plan, so you have it, but I can tell you we comply with all the dimensional criteria. Of the bylaw as well, remember the waivers we applied then. This is the grading and drainage plan, um the way that grading and drainage has been, Matt, if you don't mind, zoom in on the proposed building. For me, if you're with it. Thank you. Uh so the orange rectangles as I said before is the building itself, and I'll take you through some details of the building, we'll see that in a minute. But Matt, if you could just run your cursor over the, the stone trench that's just below the building itself. That's where it is there, so the way that we've handled infiltration at the building and really on all parts of the site. Have been to uh include leaching basins and stone trenches and perforated pipes. So that new stormwater or any stormwater really is being directed into these leaching areas. Um and would only over top uh and spill out of the leaching basins should they, should a storm event of, you know, say. Uh a hundred year capacity occur, but should that occur, water would flow naturally overland the way it does now. So what we're trying to do with these designs is capture as much of the existing stormwater from. Either the existing site or these new proposed impervious areas which include these kind of long skinny walkways. Um and get the stormwater that comes off those surfaces into the ground with the potpourri and allow it to infiltrate. Again, these are not paved surfaces that accommodate vehicles, so they are not. Gas trap, um gas basins, they are not um TSS removal. And the type of things that you might typically see in stormwater because we're not cracking salts and sands and other things in here the way we would if this. Salts and sands and other things in here the way we would if this was a parking lot or a large impervious area. Um. And I think. I'm happy to go back on any details, but we have surrounded each of these. Really the three major areas, the grandstand, the building, and then the entry on Great Road with leaching basins and um. And trenches, the details are shown on the plans as well. And we'll take the next plan when you're ready, Matt. These enlargements that go through, um now if I could get you to zoom in on the upper right corner detail, I think it's detail two there. Thank you. Um this shows the area. Immediately surrounding what this, the intended this drawing is that it shows the apron in front of the building itself where people come as they approach the concession. Function of the building. And it is ADA accessible through a ramp that's on just just the upper side there it is. Thank you, Matt. Um that would be at less than five percent that would get us and then we'd get a wheelchair up uh to the elevation of the building. The elevation or finished floor of the building is really driven by a couple of things. Including the existing conditions of the site, but more importantly by the sewer. Elevations out in Great Road because we're trying to gravity sewer. DPW's request was that we not put a pump. To pump sewer out of this, that we, if we're reusing the building, we'll turn up the ramp here. Correct. Just a few inches. We're talking, we're we're plus or minus six inches on this entire site. As we work through it, but that does create a couple of steps and some. Issues for handicapped accessibility right in this little plaza area, but easily accommodated with the addition of a of a simple ramp. And that's what we've done there. Matt, I will take that next slide when you're ready. This is the seating diagram for the grandstand. Matt, if you could zoom in on the grandstand itself. On the sea, that upper detail, thank you. Um. Again, nine hundred and fifty seats, uh a press box that's approximately eight feet wide and thirty six feet. Along, you can see on the right hand side, there is a ramp. Uh that would approach the press box. I'm sorry, that would approach the grandstand and the grandstand is a front access aisle. That is fully accessible with um handicap wheelchair seating integrated into the seating both in the middle. And off centered on the on the left hand side. Um because of the count of the seats being nine hundred and fifty, by building code, we need three points of egress. So we've got the two end egress points and then we've got one egress point in the middle. Where Matt's cursor is there and that's entirely driven by code. The uh press box, again, the orange structure shown on the back here, it has a landing on the left and right hand side. On the right hand side is the um the lift, the elevated lift. That would allow access for handicapped individuals, you know, in wheelchairs or or otherwise um challenged. To be able to get up to the press box level. Again, all required by code. Um these are things that you have to do that were not part of the code when your bleacher structure was built. The other detail below shows the concrete slab layout. Um and it's fairly straightforward. I won't take people through that on the day that's specific question, but. Um it would include accessible walkways and and foundations attracted to the bleacher itself. I'll take the next slide. Thank you, Matt. These are some cross sections through the bleacher. That show the relationship for the press box to the seating and also show some of the details. Matt, if you'll just zoom into that middle of that that image there. On the press box and and above if you could. And the detail above shows the right above that cursor just up into the right there, Matt, with a wheelchair in, you know, that is the cross aisle. Um that will be across the entire front of the bleacher and that shows how the the wheelchair will be able to recess into the first row. And provide accessibility at that level and again at the top, but allow for uh other spectators to be able to get past as well. Thank you, Matt. We'll go on to the next one. This is an elevation of the press box uh with a film filming platform above. Um and fairly straightforward on this detail. There are windows across the front for. Um for viewing and the interior press box divided into three rooms. The middle room would would typically be for. Media and communications game announcements, that that thing, then there's a team room on either end and then filming on the roof. Thank you, Matt. These are the building layouts, um the, I'm sorry, the building layout, the building elevations. And the um an illustrative rendering. Matt, I'm gonna ask you to go to the next slide. And just show it probably on a little better detail. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll get the building detailed a little bit later and. Um. We can move past it, Matt. I'll I'll address the buildings we get further in. These are some site details that speak to handicap accessibility. Um happy to go through any anybody that wants to see them, but they're. Uh they all need ADA and that architectural access for codes. And quite frankly, required by the by the current code. Thank you, Matt. And this is the utility plan showing us how we're running electric, electric and telecommunications. Um not only into the building, but also over the grandstand up in the press box. Uh so the press box will be suited with not only power, but with um internet and cable uh for data and stuff. So you'll be able to televise out of there. My understanding is that I will have a very well received um television programming class that uh. That produces uh many of the the videos that come out of those clips from the location. Thank you, Matt. Now I'm gonna ask you to jump right in on the building and particularly the the sewer line that goes up Great Road there if you would. Craig, you wanna? Think about the the draw of the the sewer line if you want.
Sure, uh Craig Maritanda, Maritanda and Associates. So we're working on the stormwater uh layout and details for this project. Uh very straightforward. We're proposing the addition of a sore manhole in Great Road going up to the top of your screen. Where we'll connect the existing sore main. And we're gonna run that back all the way through the building. It's the the black lines showing along. That's cursor there. Uh we're also going to have, you know, a couple sore manholes along the way as well as a restrap that separate. Um freezing oils from the clean water. That way you don't need the clean water goes to the town sewer network. Uh with respect to water, we're still working out some details on the water where we can access it from. There is water on site. Right near this building. We're trying to get specifics on what size and imperial water lines are there and we can. We grab water on site without running that out of Great Road as well. Uh but we'll be working through that with DPW as the same moves along a bit. But from a uh site tool standpoint, this is a very straightforward water and sewer hack into the building. Uh it'll come in under the slab.
Great, thank you. Uh Matt, can I get you to scroll out perfect right there, not too far, move back and just touch. If you would. Thank you, right there. So the blue hatchery, the plan is great to actually kill it. Uh you can see, you know, about half of the bleacher here. The building and then, but what you see in the blue hatch areas in between are the new pieces of asphalt or accessible route. That connect the site and make it accessible. Uh and that's really one of the major improvements that that we've done and this plan shows that probably the um really from a. PowerPoint perspective on from the line still. So it'll be a new paved surface that's acceptable route. Thank you, Matt. Go past this one, Matt. Let's get to the illustrative rendering. It would be easier to talk today. We got. This is a elevational uh three D rendering of the proposed bathroom concession building. This was the one that was submitted. With the original application. We have made some minor changes with the committee and those those uh changes somewhere in theory, but. Uh predominantly revolve around the window uh for the concessions and the front maintenance desire to borrow the window. Given the crowds that you can expect from your meeting. So we we've changed the design, which is the next slide, Matt. Who accommodated second window? Can I get you to zoom in on that front window for me, Matt? So uh this, there would be two open uh windows so that it will allow accessibility. Um up to uh the windows and for ease of access. There was a water bottle filling station to the right hand side, which is again is a plumbing code requirement. We met with your, one of the first things we did. Is we met with your building commissioner and your plumbing inspector to go over. The requirements that are driven by the number of seats in the bleacher that would impact the size of the the bathroom facility, the count of the fixtures required. But also the other aspects of the plumbing code, one of those being um the water bottle filling station. That's required. And then there's some interior things with regard to three base sinks and a restrap and other things that your plumbing inspector wanted. That we have included in the application to date. Um the siding on this material is a composite poured in that siding. Uh three tab architectural shingles. The um roof is guttered and the gutters uh downspouts are tied into the drainage system. Into the infiltration system that we had talked about a little bit earlier. There are some lights on this and I'm gonna, Matt, I'm gonna ask you to zoom in. On the building and I'll point out where the lights are. If you see the the black hand with the downcast. Light uh around every door, um and those are intended for egress and meet building code requirements. And I've got some more detail on lights as we go a little bit further along. So Matt, if I can. Get you to move on to the next one. This is a cutscene of the light uh that we have. It is a dark sky compliant. Light that is uh entirely downcast. It does have, and it's optional, but it does have the ring that runs around it just for. For locating services, but the the bulk of the the light is thrown down below. We've included the photometrics on the next slide. You'll be so good, Matt. It shows on the left hand side, so the um. The planned view of the light distribution um as it relates to the to this individual picture. Mounted at eve height the way we've shown it. The middle detail shows just the 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 heat temperature, if you will, of the light itself, that it's more of a. Of a white light. And then the last diagram is, if you would like, a sectional view looking down at how light might cast as it comes from. Um depending on what angle of distribution you're looking for. So. Fairly efficient uh lights intended to throw downward and not cast light upward. Um but very effective from a lighting perspective around the building to to meet the building code and provide egress. Thank you, Matt. And then um just to take a few minutes about, to talk about parking, um and where we are with regards to parking. Matt, can I get you to zoom in? Just to the image, the aerial image, if you would, a little closer. Thank you. So Matt, would you just put your cursor where the the red uh asterisks are by the bleacher itself and the and the in the building? So those two points. I considered our destination location under this diagram and the intention was to show you what parking is available. To this facility within a five minute walk. So everything that's highlighted within this plan that's in yellow. Is within a five minute walk and we actually identified the the pedestrian route in the blue dots. And arrows that kind of show what the pedestrian route or access would be. So starting across the street net. We'll go over the Great Road. There are fifty three spaces over there associated with the Boys and Girls Club directly on pound property. There are some accessible uh spaces there. So that the route that comes in will be accessible as actually all route are here, but. Um so there is a route that comes in from that location wrapped around the north end of the track. And provides access both to the to the new building and the bleacher. And then heading out towards the school, Matt, if you can kind of scroll up there. You've got uh three or four parking areas that are um accessible within, again, that five minute radius. Um all of these together without going into any one in specific to account for about two hundred and fifty seven. Parking spaces, again, we have not increased the seating capacity of the bleacher. The building is really there to serve those who are already on sites with not a capacity issue associated with the building. Um and this is the parking that is that is available to us and really has been available. Um to the site and to the facilities as they. As they exist today and will in the future. So with that, Matt, let's go to the next slide. We're getting close to the end here. We are. Um I know I've gone through that very quickly. There's a lot of information here, but. I think in the overall scope, it's a pretty straightforward project on the. Proposition of replacing a bleacher and meeting code with regards to plumbing and ADA and accessibility issues. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Um oh. Um Bill, we have peer review on this. You want to update where peer review that? I'm gonna look forward.
Yeah, I and uh let me. Explain that the peer review that was done was late peer review. And it was uh and we understood that it's going to be adjusted uh based on comments from the. Um only commissioner to address um. The uh. No amendment. Uh questions as well as uh to ensure that. Review remained in the scope of the planning board. For that reason, I did not distribute this widely through the planning board or through the. Now we gave uh copy here. Um I I've made a list. I'm gonna present it to you now. Um. Of what I think would be applicable. And I think they're very easy fixes for the applicant and um at this point, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna pass you out the comments. And I will uh highlight the ones that um remain after the building commissioners memo, which is gonna be reflected with it.
So so Bill passed this along to me and my. Request instructed you to do your word on this. Was that we maintain all the comments on peer review, but that we. Very clearly delineate which comments are applicable to planning board site interview. And which comments that are outside of the scope of planning. And the reason I did this, I found a lot of comments generally be helpful and I thought it could be helpful for the project overall, but it's not. And I wanted to. Reserve those comments, but not necessarily discuss all of them.
It'd be helpful for anybody viewing or are we?
Well, that's so, I don't want to get to that. Um since it's not publicly accessible, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on this and that's where I.
I think you're trying to get me to survive.
Yeah, the first.
I have stopped sharing, so you should let me know if there's anything that you want me to put back up.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah. Okay, yeah, there is more.
And just to set expectations, we're going to actually continue to sharing. I read, right?
I think so.
Yeah, so this is not made publicly available. We need to.
Well, that's true. That's true. So what? There's a couple of waves to go forward. I can read over. Read us a few ways.
Um I would just give us the highlights because I'd like to get to planning board comments.
Okay.
And then we can always tie up um peer review next time as well.
Yeah, I think this is simple. The highlights, uh like I said, the the building division provided. Um and I'm not hearing, he came in earlier, so um. But there there it's really uh some adjustments that have to be made. I think are very uh straightforward. I would say, uh looking at it, um. I mean, I can read them all, but I would say that number one is is something to be bet the number four. Number seven. Number ten. Eleven, twelve, thirteen. And eighteen, twenty-two. And then twenty-three to. Twenty-eight. And you could, and maybe the thing to do with a. If the board directs how they like this handled, the applicant could simply respond to it. And I could send the writing and um we can give it for um.
What I would request is that the applicant respond to the ones that are inside still and the ones that are not inside still. You don't have to respond, but please reserve those and pass them along to the rapport of this.
Yeah, we've just received this. I'm happy to get it, happy to respond and understand that we got to continue to.
Yeah, no, I think okay.
And the reason like again, I I the reason I didn't send it, I had completed, I expected, we've been going back and forth and you're and they're amending. And so you're probably gonna have. An amended one. I was not gonna use this at all. Okay, no, tonight.
So it sounds like to be clear, wait for the amended version. And then that'll be the working version then. Then they stand for us. Right, yes.
And the building commissioner's draft, so that's what I that we did.
So my preference would be to just go to the planning with comments and you can deal with your. But it makes sense, Matt?
Yeah.
Um so let's turn to the planning. If you want to.
Yeah, oh, I just had two, well, I'll start with two quick questions. One. I think that you said this, but I want to make it clear. The crosstalk, the Boys and Girls Club parking.
Yeah.
That crosstalk that currently that will remain the same that they have. That crosswalk that currently that will remain the same, that they have to. Right appropriately.
It does. It does have curb cuts. The curb cuts have that uh warning strip so that it's code compliant. You know, honestly, the painting could be redone because it's worn out, but other than that, it's 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 meets the definition for an acceptable.
And then ju- generally looking especially at the water sewer plan. That what will be, I know that the the site is meant to be a pedestrian site primarily. But I presume that there will occasionally be a particular access required for for the maintenance or. Um I guess just, you know, uh but especially things like the, you know, the path, the new paved area from. One seventeen from one seventeen towards the track. And then the track, the edge of the track being part of the accessible route. I'm just wondering what the vehicular access will be to the new building. When required.
So vehicular access to the new building can be accommodated through a couple of ways. Primarily, it will come from the high school direction and it'll come down that that back pathway the way vehicles may now and service the existing field out. Um there would be nothing that would prohibit why is there some gates on the become up great road. And come into the site. Um you could come through several gates to get in. If you came in through the main entrance, portable paving, certainly it's wide enough to be able to accommodate a vehicle. A vehicle could stay on the walkway as it kind of wraps the edges of track or it could separate. And go over the basketball court area for that to to get in for maintenance purposes over the existing building. Much the way vehicle do now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I don't know what to say. Well, no, we have to appreciate that information. Um in conjunction with that, I guess the new asphalt, you know, talking about the accessible roots and just the general pedestrian roots from one seventeen. Maybe we can zoom in on what the roof is along the track, just because again, I'm not an expert in what it looks like over there. In terms of the width of, you know, like how how that root actually continues other than the the new half. For the the current and and.
Now that we can put up on the screen, um I figure that one of these figures that shows.
Looking through the gallery here, did we lose a connection with the town admin conference room?
I think so.
I had a bit of a glitch and then I I stopped hearing them and now I don't see them in the uh.
I don't either. I I lost them too. I mean, it it just froze.
The admin entered the waiting room. Let's see if we can admit them back.
Okay, well. Are we, are we on with? With them or am I on on your screen or?
You're on on my screen. Uh Zoom is decentralized in that manner. Um that we are in fact still recording.
We're all on except for the conference room.
Uh gentlemen, uh sorry, we had some tech. Building these, we rejoined, but it didn't seem like everyone else stayed. Um. So I'm gonna, I'm just for the record, I'm gonna ask a net to repeat the comments. So that we have it and then we'll turn it back over. Again, did I call you that again? Oh, my God.
Oh, I that wasn't me. I I was in Bo somewhere. Uh we we froze for a while on here.
Um so my last comment was regarding the walkway from one seventeen towards the new proposed building and the. New proposed bleachers, we get the hatched area and what it looked like in between the basketball courts and the track.
Yep, that's an excellent question. So Matt, you're actually on the right sheet, I think, so that if you could zoom in to the um. To the hatch area by Great Road and we'll kind of start there.
What was the comment? Sorry?
Bear with us a second. We're we're minimizing the view of it. There we go. Yeah, much better.
You got.
Um so. Right there. So Matt, if you would take your cursor and put it between the stone piers out by Great Road, right there. So that's where the new pavement will meet the existing sidewalk as you come into the site. And Matt, I'm gonna ask you to take your cursor and just slowly go along the accessible route to come in across the new pavement. You would then hit the existing asphalt walkway that is on the outside of the fence. But the track, that walkway is about approximately six feet plus or minus. Accessible route. Need to be at least forty-eight inches. They can narrow to thirty-six to get around obstruction, but. Um this walkway stays uh about six feet all the way around. To where we pick up the new asphalt on the park side, right, right there, Matt, right? Yeah, right. We've got it there. And we come down providing egress to the bathroom. Uh again, this is a minimum of six feet wide as we get through here. And then Matt, if you could over to the bleacher. So from the existing field out, Matt, right in that stretch, if you go back. Where the existing pavement is, I just want to show where the existing pavement is versus. Versus what's kind of compact to ground. So take it right in there and keep going to your right. No, I mean, just for the correct, there you are. So there's a small section in there that's existing asphalt. And that's why that that narrows, the piers now. It's actually all asphalt all the way around, right? So I've narrowed the new asphalt because I'm just cutting. To get utilities over because I'm putting utilities on the ground, the electric and cell data and like it tends to get over. So although the. New asphalt is narrow, the asphalt and the accessible route around is more than sufficient for what to meet code. And then we broaden it again. As we approach the grandstand and we widen it to be fully accessible. And then we go around the back of the grandstand. Again, with that asphalt. And we skinny up, the skinniest place we have is right behind the dugout uh and right behind the the bleacher. It does narrow to forty-eight inches, but it it does need code. I could narrow to thirty-six to consider an obstruction. But I can't create my own obstruction, so bleacher. Is um slightly more than forty-eight inches off of the fence uh on the back of the dugout. Enough room for us to get by and consider.
And that's where the wheelchair lift.
And wheelchair lift is right there, yeah, right on the backside. And there's also an egress to a stair. Right under the bleacher, right? We come right from where the where the lift is up into the the front hall as well. So. That's the accessible route. That's been approved to provide access to the rest of the site. I hope that answers your question.
Um on that topic, can we go back to the basketball area? That that portion, if you could zoom in. You said this is. Six feet plus or minus that walkway? That that seemed narrow um for for this level of. Occupancy, right? The occupancy is nine fifty. So I'm gonna look at that, that nine fifty number and I look at the six-foot walkway for one of two egresses out of the area. And six feet seems quite narrow. Um, does that make sense?
It does. It does. And I won't necessarily disagree with you. Um what I would suggest is that out of the two hundred and fifty places, two hundred and fifty-seven. Spaces which provide access to this, it's fifty-three that are across Great Road where most of them are on by the high school.
Most of the walking community and I'm not throwing argument here, but people do walk, so but. But we should we not increase that to eight feet?
We are entirely able to increase that. The decision to leave it at six feet was entirely. Driven by trying to keep the cost down. Um there were no utility. Well, there's an electric utility in there now that would prohibit us. From widening, but that electric utility is going into the new building, so that would be out of the way. So I can, uh we have every possibility to widen that to eight feet. That would be the board's program.
Uh we look at circular from site plan, um so that's gonna be my lens on how to work. Now, we can, we can circle on it. We can circle back to that. I think I I have some comments, but you want to? Oh, did you have any more?
I don't know. I don't, I don't. No, I'm good.
Um. Other board bench?
Oh, I got, you're coming about. Simple circulation around a new building. Um. First off, this particular drawing you're showing. Different from all the other drawings.
That one's not correct.
Um this is wrong, right?
Yeah, this is.
Matt, if I can get you to go to. L one. What layout and interior plan?
Could you go to L seven?
Who wants this one, right? Yeah, so you want me to zoom in right here?
Let's start here and then we'll go to L seven if it's okay, because this will show the walkways. Can you get in any tighter on that, Matt?
Yep, sure.
So starting at the accessible ramp, uh Matt, that comes off the asphalt there. Yeah, go right up there. So the accessible route here would come up that ramp and I call it a ramp. It's at less than four percent. I'm sorry, less than five percent. So technically. I'm sorry. On scratch. It doesn't even, I must have been designed at eight percent and um so it does have handrails. Um so that would be the accessible route as it goes up. The walkway would continue along that northern face of the building. And wrap around the back to provide access into the bathrooms. We don't need a walkway down the uh what would be the western side. Um align there and that would be a landscaped edge kind of down to the to the grading uh down to the infiltration basin.
The question about that ramp, that's also used for deliveries in the building? Because. That's how you'd roll it, right? Because you have stairs and stuff.
Uh there's, yeah, there's stairs. The deliveries can come in in a number of different ways. They can go right across the basketball courts. They can come in and up that walkway. Um there's plenty of egress. There's nothing that that prohibits egress from. The side of the building all the way out across the basketball court. We are repaving a little bit in that area just to clean up the saw cut.
Is that what that new basketball?
Yeah, that's why we have realized it. Just a saw cut to give a clean edge and.
Okay, so essentially there's gonna be, it's gonna be. Concrete and asphalt, then basketball court.
And then basketball court, right.
So what's the full width of the concrete plus asphalt? That's a little concerned that it was a little tight there because it looks like the the new paint, new stuff is like. And to the earlier point, this is. Very special that gives with heavy two-way, well, super heavy surgeon. Five feet didn't seem to be enough.
So the the walkway on the side is a six-foot concrete walkway and we've got a trench drain except in stormwater that's kind of coming out of the building itself. Because the the basketball courts parade towards that building. Um and then you've got the asphalt patch on the other side, which is, you know, just two and a half feet. Um. But there's nothing, there's really nothing that prohibits pedestrians at all to walk around that side. You've got, so again, six-foot walkway. Six-foot trench drain all graded and then there's then the two and a half foot asphalt patch. So you've got. About nine feet in total before you're into what I would consider the plain surface of that ball behind the sideline.
So you said it's six feet?
Yes, if you want to get L three, detail two. And see it labeled as a six-foot concrete walkway.
Okay, yeah. I just don't, I didn't see that. I imagine you called out on L seven. Well, seven is significant.
Well, seven is really there more for the interior structure of the the building itself, but the site work would be. Officially here at home for.
Well. Alright, so I'm concerned about how much width there is along that side. Especially for accessibility purposes. Especially in the back of the door, is that, we didn't get five feet of. Of paved area or of concrete or whatever?
It is. Those doors went out, of course.
Right, so maybe five feet past the doors.
Not by code, no.
No, but in real life.
If you'd like to add more. Asphalt, we could certainly, you know, or concrete, we could certainly consider.
These are, these are not design critiques of you because I I'm fully aware of the instructions you've been given to design the site, so. But please don't take these as critiques of of your work.
No, I, and and certainly I don't, and I'm I'm trying to be, but when I say we can add it, but the reality is we can't add it and. But um everything just adds cost. So our our scope, our charge by, you know, the town. Was to design uh an accessible route that met the criteria and not. Try to be excessive because obviously the object was a was an issue.
And I agree with the comment of not being excessive. Um I I think our perspective is to be adequate as well. Not, you know, adequate from a site plan per perspective. I think generally we're seeing some squeeze points that I think. Actually, I I I know they need to be reconsidered um for adequacy of of flow, pedestrian flow.
Okay.
Is that, is that the way, good way to say it, guys? Right? Generally, overall.
Well, it's just weird you gotta close a bathroom door to get.
Yeah, surrounded.
Right, to get to, to get to the.
Get back to the.
You have to go past the men's room door open and you know that kind of thing.
It's tough in the wheelchair.
Right.
Three times more feet.
Yeah, so I think it's those considerations we're looking for. Now, many of you have you done three pretty good together, so I have no. I have, I have no um reservation with you.
Thank you.
That I don't need to talk about every detail. I think generally, I think we get a drill.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we'll get those and broaden where we can.
And and just one. Last site that I come up for that L seven plan, that that rendering?
Yes.
Seems to show grass where.
It does. We're gonna race.
Don't imply that there's that big apron spacer. Right, a little positive.
Going over, we can clean up. More intended to show the ability itself, but it's a fair comment. Yeah, I guess mine were kind of just looking at the drainage plan. So you you mentioned you guys did. Geotek or Strucco, I assume that was also kind of looking at where the leaching basin areas were gone as well. And we would both. Okay, so you you said these are sites for the hundred-year service and shit, is that true? Uh, no, they're not, they're not. One of the reasons that we requested a waiver on stormwater is because it's difficult to calculate. A storm uh design of this of this size, just because the the amounts of impervious and the script of building is so small. But we have not um. Calculated this for the hundred-year event. It would certainly satisfy a twenty-five-year.
Yeah, I I would only say five because I thought. So I I don't, designing for that would be excessive. I guess I was just ensuring, I wanted to, you know. I see their dimensions on here, but I don't know if they were standard dimensions, for example, of the trench drain or. You know, the leaching basin. I don't know what those quantities would be, but just, you know, ensuring that they're. Like sized roughly for the the drainage area that that may be going to them and not just kind of standard. Um I mean, the the French train. Seems pretty big, four by two, full of stone, you know, but um. I agree that it doesn't need a full stormwater report. I almost put just kind of ensuring they are right sized.
There was, yeah, so there's, there's very little site drainage going on in the site right now and some of the areas that. Although our work is kind of minimal, particularly when we're in the building and some of the other areas that are half on, half off pavement. Um the basketball courts, just sheet flow. Directly with no infiltration. So we're trying to accommodate some of those larger existing conditions as well, same time they work to these improvements.
Yeah, I was, you know, it looks like the whole. Bleacher pad sheet goes into that row of area drains, you know, right next to the baseball. Diamond and just kind of looking and making sure that, you know. I don't know if that's concrete under that existing bleacher today, but it's, you know, that would be. Adequate to, you know, it kind of looks like it's a little point there. Changing impervious, the amount of impervious impervious around the bleacher area.
Yeah, so well, underneath the bleacher right now is kind of a packed gravel. Yeah, so, well, underneath the bleacher right now is kind of a, a packed gravel, um. Wouldn't say it's grass, I'm not sure how much it, but it does drain back towards the baseball.
Might have been a perfect at one point, but anymore.
There's evidence of some broken. So, uh, we added that line of area drains and, and infiltration pipe. To try and pick up what we know is an existing issue now with regard to stormwater kind of collecting.
You got others?
No, that was.
Uh, Annette, do you have, um, any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't, thank you.
Uh, Jim Coleman, do you have any questions for the applicant? You can just move on. Make sure he can unmute. Um, while we wait, I have a few questions. Um, you probably will have a split plan during, during. Um, are you removing any trees?
We are not.
So that leach pit area, that's just south of the. Right, yeah, there's a leach pit area adjacent to the concession stand. I, I, I presume that's an area that's intended to not be walked over or crossed in any way.
Yeah, there's actually a grade that comes down off that building, so there'd be a little side slope. Down off the building that would get you down to a low point, and that's kind of an existing low point. It's just a above the, uh, batting cage, the existing batting cages that are right there in field house. Up to the basketball courts, that's kind of where the existing low points sit right now. This, what's the, what's the surface going to look like at that? Uh, it'll be exposed stone, uh, trench, uh, with grass on either side. It'll be a. Um, a domed. Lid for the bleaching basin on, on either end, but in what I, I mentioned, what side of the film are you looking at?
Have we gotten like?
Typically like arranged floor. Well, typically, no, typically I'm like one and a half inch, uh, three quarter inch, one and a half inch stone. I want to be a little bit, a little bit bigger.
Chris, were you? Maybe you're getting infected. That's a desire line for the bathroom to the parking?
Um, I just know that people. That, that is the direct route to the other access point out up here.
Right.
So it's like school.
Explain to me where you're.
So if you're standing in front of the concession stand. The, the direct route is to turn left and walk between the fieldhouse and the proposed concessions to them. And I'm, I'm, I just want. Just thinking if that's going to be. Um, you know, people will walk that way if they can, but I didn't know what the real sort of surface conditions would be like.
Well, there's. Yeah, I can get, I can get to the area, some of the photos in the presentation, but. Uh, there's an existing batting cage right behind the field house that's made it.
Yeah.
And, Matt, if you can zoom right into that.
Should you say it kind of dead ends?
Yeah, it's really not what I would consider an accessible area. Um.
That, that's, as long as you're thinking about it in that way, that's all.
As long as that batting cage stays. I don't really see a pedestrian route because people behind the field house.
That rectangle is.
Yeah.
That in cage is right here where my cursor is.
I think it's surrounded by temperate tall net.
Would you consider landscaping kind of between the concession stand and the field house that would even more block off the access route? You know, you.
No, I didn't.
I don't know. Just to make it more, even more clear that it's not a place to walk.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's.
If it's awful, I'm, I'm not obstructing that part. But, but the better than that. Are you anticipating any new utility pool for this work at all?
Potentially, um, we're still working out that service drop with National Grid, so. Matt, can I get you to zoom out? I don't have a, I don't have a final answer on that, because we have worked with National Grid. Uh, one of the things that our electrical engineer discovered, uh, as they did an investigation of the site. Is that the existing electrical service that comes into the site now that's located a panel just at the apex of that track, uh, close to, yeah, right in that area. Isn't. Basically like a four by six plywood box. That has your electrical. Panel board.
And keeping it, right?
That's, that's right.
Yeah, we're getting rid of that. Um, so there's a hundred amp service in there, which is.
Hundred amp.
For the, for the entire site. And. Yeah, there you go, man. There it is. So, uh, often. During an event. You will throw breakers, and when the breakers throw on this site, because of the load that's required for it, it not only. Impacts that load there, but it impacts the breaker pole. In which the school then has called National Grid Command and actually replaced the breaker on the pole, so. Um, our electrical engineer is recommending. That a new service drop be made into the site to accommodate not only the loads here, but, you know, we're going to exceed. The building itself is going to have a two hundred amp service. Press box is going to have a hundred amp service. So we've got to increase the service load in the site. Um. That's something that a new pole location might be determined by that.
Yeah, and do, do you see any issues with the wall that protection access you're talking about with pole?
No, I think if we, if we do a pole drop, it's going to be over. And if you could go into the grass area roughly where the sewer line goes out on the far side of that upper right corner of that picture.
If a. And you're doing electrical drops, one at the concession house and one at?
No, it'll just be one electric drop into the site and it'll be underground.
Okay, from there, great.
And, and the new panel. Will be located in the storage room of the building, so all your electric components, your, your fixtures, everything. Will be put into the new building.
And the historic commission wants to keep the old electrical drop panel?
We're, we're willing to give it to them. And, yeah, so the new electric will go into that storage room.
That, and I know until I'm right in. That's beyond your scope, right? Good question. You know what the signage is at Great Road at the crosswalk? Crossing all, I don't. Right, we should. I, I may want to. Just pretty, pretty, if we can improve that at all, just sign.
Sorry about entry signage for along that field.
Um, no, so, uh, the, the crosswalk, the cross Great Road, boys and girls as well.
Or you get cars to, to stop it everywhere?
Yeah, at the crosswalk, um.
I do have pictures of that on, I haven't showed here, but I can, I can easily.
I don't mean what it is. If it's adequate, that's fine, but if it's not, I think we should probably.
I'll take a look at that, yeah.
I'm going to do something. It's not entirely our burden, but I have to say it out loud. It's just kind of me, great, I'm just going to say this one thing. It's twenty twenty four, and I feel like having only a men's room and a women's room. Will lead to problems in the future.
That was my comment, man, we're people.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was going to ask if we've been, if there's any way we can have a term to them. What I've seen at many facilities now.
I'd be, I'd be happy to take that back. To the client.
Yeah, it might be a consideration. You know, just going forward, I feel like that it's going to be a problem eventually, so. Something to consider.
Truth be told, I won't spend too much time on this. We've had this conversation. With the, uh, committee, um, they raised the same question and had the same concern. The reason that the drawings have been submitted the way they are to date is because this is what the plumbing code tells you to do, and the plumbing code does not address. Gender related discrepancies, so it's men's and women's that's all plumbing progress, so if we were to do. A family room or gender neutral room. I'd have to look it up and fix the fixture down the side of the building.
Right. I think it's, I think it's a significant improvement that is worthy of. Doing everything we can to get a family room that has one, so.
Fair enough.
You don't have enough, and I didn't see it, but you don't have a cross section of. The concession stands is kind of go, I saw a ramp.
Cross section through the site or through the building itself?
It's the building itself, you can see the whole building, all that, through the stairs.
No, not, well, that would be through the site, and no, I don't have a cross section through the, the front apron area, um.
What's, what's the total elevation difference between what you're thinking at the bottom stair?
Exactly. Um, it's only about twelve inches, it's only two steps there, but, um, to get in, so the difficulty with that area, Matt, if I could get you to go to. Sheet L three. Detail one. And zoom in on that, yeah, there you go. So the difficulty with this little area, and there's more wall and rampant stairs here than I would typically like, the structure of the side. Part of that is driven by the finished floor elevation of the building that I have to have to, to get the sewer line out without. Uh, the other part is driven by the cost, cross slope requirements. Have to be all less than two percent in any direction we go. Throughout there, and after struggling with that for about three days and trying to get the grades to work, we introduced the ramp and the steps. And it took away the. The problem of trying to get those cross slopes to all match, because we've got some odd areas, and we have to meet, since we're leaving the existing field house in place, we have to meet. Finished pavement around those edges as well, so. I will admit that's a little more fussy, um, I would like it to be.
Guess is that the, the way you would. Want to design this would probably. Increase the aerial scope. You would need to then press.
Yeah.
Yeah. Meaning that there would be substantially more. Instruction. I don't.
Right, but this, you know, I think resolves it, it resolves it. In a way that will look very attractive. It gives a very nice kind of landing area apron in front of concessions. It gives, quite frankly, does, when you have two steps like that that are twelve inches in height. Um, it becomes a nice seating area. I'm not necessarily thinking about. The major game days when everybody's there, but the average practice day when kids are there, it's going to be a great place to gather and. Um. You know, kind of wait for kids to come and go.
Um, then there's a retaining wall on the, on the building at the concession house, which is the smaller painting on the left side.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not a huge fan of retaining walls in general. If we can avoid them, I'm sure you, you're not either. We do have retaining wall, uh, one type of safety apparatus, so obviously people step off on, I'm presuming this is. Twelve inch. Probably retaining wall or something like that.
That, that's really all it is, is, is about twelve to eighteen inches of really seat wall height, um, it would be, um. Bushed on the, on the back side. Um, but it's there because there is a door on the existing field house that faces the.
Well, definitely, that's why we're doing it.
We need to provide entrance into that, into that door. I hope that's probably why I'm down.
Um, thank you for. Anything else on board?
Yeah, I just got one other thing I was. Previewing the signage on the crosswalk. It caught my eye that the acceptable route into the parking lot. There's a driveway. There's an opportunity to. Cut it along the fence lines when we go straight into the parking lot without going through the driveways. That would need to be done.
Can you? I'm not fully following, but if the applicant.
He's across the, he's sorry, he crossed the street and saved road in the parking lot.
Firelight cells.
The ADA accessible parking spaces are those ones by the way.
Yes.
And currently the route takes to. The ADA route. In through the driveway. To the parking.
Right, but there's a way to avoid it, a very simple little way to avoid it. Apparently everybody walks on anything, but. Um, I could, I'm going to have to take a, I could try and find a direct connection with the parking. Through the driveway.
Other side of the.
Yeah, it's got rapid flat, it's a standard.
Maybe we can bring someone calm again.
Do you have a bigger size?
Yeah.
Anything else in the morning? Okay, when, um, when would you prefer to continue to?
Um, is your next, is your next thing at twelve? Next thing would be.
Stunned about, right?
Uh, yeah.
It would be twelve, maybe fourteen days from now.
Twenty six.
I will be able to do the twenty six, but we could do the twelve.
Are you, do you? Predict you're going to go to this town, I don't. I'm lost.
No, um, no, that, important to note. Uh, the committee has formally voted to push off in anticipation of a fall. Now meeting. So there's no pressure. From the time.
We won't, we won't consider that.
Uh, well, next to twelve, we have, uh, I'm out of here, it was your, like. Yeah, I mean, it's a. What is that?
I did, I think this is the symbol. I think next. Meeting is good as we.
So, or is something, um. So seventy six. Oh, yes, transfer that, yeah, that's right, okay, it's seventy six.
Yeah, we'd be ready to review, period, beyond.
You, the only thing is I'm going to be gone. Uh, so she's seen Juliet as well. But you have to get your door up here. Yeah, they have to come get me.
No, zoom in.
Yeah.
I will make him look to continue the hearing, student March fourth at seven P M. All in favor by voice.
Yes.
Natalie.
Yes.
And that.
Yes.
Yeah. Jeff.
Yeah.
And I mean, that says five zero two. Thank you all. Thank you. Yeah, you got to go. Thank you, really good work.
A little dirty, but can you sign that on your way? Oh, I get paid on commission minutes.
Um, meeting minutes, um, maybe we can get Bill at least. The January meeting minutes.
And Mr. Chan's off. Okay, you're leaving that, that's got, that's got set.
Can I make a blanket change for all of the minutes?
Uh.
That's name is Roberts, not Robert.
I didn't know that anymore. Can't you just put the ass on?
No.
Right. Um, can we, can we consider January ninth and twenty third only for tonight?
Sure.
Hey, Bill, on January nine. Okay, right. Um. Public here in ADU, second paragraph. It says, talks about removing some appliances. But it lists rent below that somewhere.
Okay, where's that? You can, you can give them your.
This, uh, this goes in the next paragraph that talks about using.
Okay, you want to see me here?
Yeah.
Hold on, Jim, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, Jim, thank you. We, we continued the hearing, um, for the bleachers till March. Well, then we're just going to review some meeting minutes and then close the meeting. Any questions, Jim?
No. No.
Thank you. Any other, um. Annette, any, um. Any corrections on the minutes?
No, I'm still reading it.
No. The meeting minutes for January ninth and, and changed tonight. Amended tonight, um.
Well, I'll second that notion, uh, all in favor by voice, Bill Cuniga.
Yes.
Um, Natalie.
Yeah.
Annette.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Let me ask five zero to approve meeting minutes for January nine.
Absolutely.
One change at the very end.
Okay.
Um. Does Chair Art. Interjected that he didn't, didn't see noise as a consideration for pressure permit, that is not my comment. Uh, my comment was that, um. That, um. Uh, noise, um. Yeah, noise, noise is considered as part of special permanent criteria, but. Yeah, noise, noise is considered as part of especially permanent criteria, but, um. That, uh, we, we don't, we don't, I wasn't considering noise on where. Uh, how we don't, uh, where business should, should, should generally, you know, I wasn't considering it for the question that was.
We just tried to. That's.
You can, right, I, I, that's not what I would give him. I get you, um. Along through the monitor on the next. Um, I'll make a motion to a superior to meeting minutes in January twenty third.
Has amended?
Has amended.
Yeah.
No, I'll keep her, keep her.
Wait a second. All in favor by voice, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Um, Natalie?
Yeah.
Annette?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And I'm a guest. Five zero. I'm a good one, yeah.
Okay, we're not very good.
Um, Jim, would you like to do the honors for us and close?
Certainly will, motion to close the meeting.
Thanks, Jim, all in favor by voice. Both sides. It's second again, um, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes, please.
All right. Natalie?
Yeah.
Annette?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I vote yes, that's the meeting's closed, thank you everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.